Good evening and welcome to the public session of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, June the 15th, 2016. I would like to welcome everyone tonight and note there are no regrets that everyone is here, and I would like to thank all those of you in the audience for joining us tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the first people of this territory and other Indigenous people for sharing this land in order for us to continue our work today. I would also like to ask everyone, if you haven't already, please, if you could silence or mute or turn off whatever type of instrument you have that may make noise, it'd be greatly appreciated. And I would also like to remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded, and we are live streamed to our millions of viewers out there. I would also like that you please join me in honoring the memory of the victims from the violent hate crime targeted against the LGBTQI2S community in Orlando this past Sunday. The Halton District Stool Board stands in solidarity to acknowledge those who lost their lives, as well as the many who were injured in Orlando over this past weekend. As we have learned, these individuals were targeted simply as a result of their lived gender and sexual orientation. As an educational institution, this incident reminds us of the important role we have in teaching acceptance, understanding, and respect for all. We join all others across Halton in passing along our sincere condolences and love to those directly impacted, as well as the entire LGBTQI2S community as a whole. Our thoughts and prayers, and most importantly, our support is with this community in the difficult days and moments ahead. And if you could join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So our first order of business tonight is approval of the agenda. And before I ask for a mover, there's one item, item 4.2.6 with Code of Ethics policy, which is to be moved up to 4.2.3 under four action items on September the 7th, 2016. 4.2.3 it will become, and everything else will get bumped down. And we also realize that the motion regarding the trustee code of conduct is missing, and it will come under committee reports. So with those amendments, can I have a mover for the approval of the agenda? Trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Gray. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Whoop, a sec. I'm jumping ahead. He's not there, okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Do we have any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we do have one delegation. I'd like to welcome Denise Nasav, the CAC chair regarding the budget. Welcome Denise.
Thank you.
May I remind you, you have five minutes.
Yes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you again tonight on behalf of CAC. We've had many opportunities over the past few weeks to share our concerns about the 2016-17 budget, and I'd like to take this opportunity to continue advocating for children with exceptionalities. We voted to not support the special education plan for a variety of reasons, many of which have budget considerations, but it all results in the erosion of support for children with exceptionalities. Children are falling through the cracks and not getting the support they need. Every time we make a cut to direct service to our students, we create more challenges for these students. Students who already face struggles in school, we have to find a way to reduce the costs without cutting direct services. The families our associations represent have very diverse needs, but we are completely aligned in our opposition to the elimination of the learning centers and the cut in service it represents. We like to deal with facts and data. We have not seen any data that supports the closing of these centers. We have lots of anecdotal data and success stories from families who have attended the centers. We would love to see some data that tracks students for years after to prove how their time at the learning center has helped them to be successful. How can we be sure that we are making the right decision without this data? This is the reason we asked for the review of special education and student services. We want to be sure that the support programs and services we are providing are truly helping our students to be successful, no matter what that definition of success is. This brings me to our request today. We are asking you to delay cutting the learning centers until the completion of the review. We hope that this review will find budget savings that do not involve cutting direct services to students. Maybe there are programs that are not working as effectively and/or can be delivered in a more effective way. We just don't know. We haven't been given any other options other than the elimination of the learning centers. We don't even know what else should be considered. How can we sleep at night knowing that we are making a decision without truly understanding its impact? We are asking for a year. A year to find the answers and to ensure we have the best possible support for our students. We've sat through all these discussions. You've seen us in the gallery. We've been here. We've listened. We've talked at the CAC table. We recognize that rejecting the budget now means more work very close to a deadline. But often doing the right thing is not always the easiest thing, but is worth it in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. There's still a little bit of time. Do we have any points of clarification or questions for our speaker tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. And thank you to the chair, and thank you to speaking on behalf of CAC. I would like to comment on the concerns that the Chair of CAC raised in opposition to the budget. I would expect or hope that CAC would be pleased to see in this board package that a warrant for an independent special education review has been tabled. Certainly at the CAC table, we did hear quite a discussion for support of an external neutral body who could review the work within the program, processes, and services every day. The CAC trustees, who sit at the table here, will help ensure CAC will be engaged meaningfully in terms of informing the progress and providing feedback so that together we can shape the next budget process in a collaborative way. With respect to the loss of the learning centers, you'll see that a trustee-led motion from trustee Graves that will speak to the role of the trustee to set clear expectations of student achievement and to monitor the student achievement so that the budget is aligned with these goals. The recommendation set out to replace the services of the learning center with a school-based delivery and equipping our staff with additional skills is a new direction, however one we need to ensure it accomplishes the goal to support children with exceptionalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other points of clarification or comments for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much Denise for coming up tonight. We appreciate it. So our next item is the minutes of the regular board meeting from Wednesday, June the 1st, 2016. May I have a mover to accept the minutes? Moved by trustee Gabens, seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on the minutes tonight? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we are now up to approval of business transacted in private session. Vice Chair Graves?
Thank you. I have two items. The first is with regard to property matters. Report 16104, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second or? Trustee Gabens. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Which, a sec, I'm not sure it's there. This is where we need our public service announcements about all our great things that are happening in the system. There's two motions. Okay, thank you. All right, so all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. And you have a second?
Yes, the second is with regard to negotiations, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second or? Trustee Gray. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Trustee Reynolds? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Is there any other items?
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. So we are now up to our action items, or sorry, our order paper. I skipped right by. Is there any comments or questions on the order paper tonight? Seeing none? Our next item, our action items, and the first, item 3.4.1 is the 2016-2017 Capital and Operating Budget Superintendent Beerman report 16097 on page 11 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Beerman.
Thank you. Through the chair and the board of trustees, the budget was presented at the June 1st meeting. The process began in January 2016, and we've had many, many meetings and discussions with respect to the budget. At this point, I'd be pleased to respond to any further questions.
Thank you. First, I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016-2017 Halton District School Board PSAB operating budget in the amount of $712,468, and the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditures of funds as outlined in Appendix A. And be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016-2017 Halton District School Board, I know it's PSAB, capital budget in the amount of $48,938,443, and that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditures of funds as outlined in Appendix B. Moved by trustee Harvey Hope, seconded by trustee Papin. Discussion? Vice Chair Graves?
Thank you. As I indicated last week, I did provide a notice of motion. I do have a motion to bring this evening, and it's one, I'm a little bit stuck in a catch-22. I know we've had a lot of great discussion over the past few weeks. I know there's a lot of anxiousness about the learning centers. The motion I am bringing for is something that I would need in order to be able to pass the budget. So I'm a little bit stuck on procedure. I'd like them both to pass at the same time. So I'm looking for some direction on that.
If trustee Papin is willing, I would entertain the idea of passing your motion first, if that helps.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I will read the motion. It has been circulated to all trustees in advance. Be it resolved that the director be directed to undertake a SWOT, Strength, Weaknesses, Opportunities, Threats Analysis of the Learning Center Model that includes parent voice, sampled from parents who had children in the program in 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016, and provide a report by October 2016, which includes a plan for providing service to students who have been referred to the Learning Center. And part two is provide by March 2017, a report on services provided to all students on the waitlist for the Learning Center. All students currently on the waitlist.
Director Miller, you wanted to speak to that? Well, just a minute. So it's moved by vice chair Graves, seconded by trustee, or sorry, trustee Papin. Go ahead.
Through you, Chair Amos, to all trustees. Staff completely support this motion. We think it's an important motion, and it should become a part of our regular practice. So we have no opposition to this. But I would like to comment just a little bit about the learning centers. It has been the focus of the conversation around budget and special education plan for some time now, a couple of months, and we've heard the message. That's why we support this, and the education review is a special education review, which you'll see coming later. We are absolutely 100% confident that the students who would normally go to the learning centers will be supported by our staff. We have many students who could go to the Learning Center in previous years who have not, and we believe that they have been supported. I understand the need and the desire for data. They will get, you will have data for next year. But I would also like to comment on special education funding in general. As many of you know, we had a $2 million cut in special education funding from Ministry of Education. We brought that back, and our proposal is around $560,000 cut. So 1.5 million has been found different places. And I also think that a very important initiative that's come out of student services, that we are addressing a big need that we have had in this board for many years. In the fall, we often get students new to the board with needs that we did not anticipate or were unaware of. And when these students come to our schools, and they have a great deal of difficulty in getting into our schools, and in some cases, don't get into our schools until we can find the money to resource and support these children. The student services has recommended in the budget, and it's been talked about, and I believe CAC supports it, a $500,000 contingency fund so that we can address these challenges as quickly and efficiently as possible and ensure that all kids who are new to our board, who have come with needs, can get into our schools as quickly as possible. The other area that I think we have not discussed deeply is the additional $300,000 specifically for professional development for special ed, for CERTS, for student services, to use that money to support our teachers. I believe strongly, and I think I'm speaking for all staff and trustees, that we need to improve our capacity. We have great capacity in this board. We have great student, we have great special education teachers and special education specialists, but I believe every teacher is a special education teacher, and we have to provide them with the resources and the tools to improve their own capacity. Hence, an increase, we have been building capacity all along, but hence, we're putting an additional $300,000 into improving, increasing the capacity of our students, our staff, to improve their ability to work with students with special needs. So that's really all I had to say about that, but I thought it was important that it be said because I think in some respects, the focus being on the learning centers, that's not been out there in the public very often, and I think that's a strong initiative by the board to recognize the challenges we face with some of our special needs students, particularly our new kids that we, that just arrive at our doors, and we are unaware of their needs or their circumstances when they come in. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Collard?
Thank you. Through you to vice chair Graves. I just wanted to thank you for bringing that motion this evening. It does alleviate some of the concerns that I had with respect to both the spec ed plan and the budget. Unfortunately, I will not be able to support the budget this evening, but I do want to recognize the amount of work and effort that has gone into the budget this year, and I don't want anyone to think that this is a slight to the amount of work that's been done because I do recognize a serious amount of work has gone into building a budget where we brought in less money than we expected to, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle Lee?
Thank you very much, and again, I'd like to express my thanks as well to trustee Gaves. That motion does help me, and I will be supporting your motion trustee Gaves. But for my own peace of mind, and I know that we have children currently on the waiting list for the Learning Center, and so through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to direct a question to Superintendent Zonfield. September 1st, what is the plan for those children, please?
Through the chair, trustee Danielle Lee. So we currently have 29 students on the waiting list, keeping in mind that we have historically served about 150, 160 students per year. And so those students, we are, I've made the commitment at the CAC table that our plan is to be very specific about each of those students. We'll be, we have their referrals, and we'll be going to each school to talk with staff about the profiles of those students, their needs, how those can be supported in the regular classroom, any training needs that those staff need, resources, structures around planning, timetabling, et cetera. All of those things will work with each of those schools to make sure that each of those students are supported come September and moving forward. And then a commitment, as is being requested in this motion, to then be checking in on those students going into the, later into the winter and the spring to ensure that those needs are met.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank actually members of CAC. I brought this to a CAC meeting, and I received some good inputs on the motion from them. And also to thank the other three CAC trustees, trustee Reynolds, trustee Collard, and trustee Papin, who also gave some excellent feedback on this. Thanks.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I will call the question. All those in favor? Yes? This is the motion regarding the Learning Center monitoring. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So now we will return to the recommendation for the approval of the budget. Do we have any speakers to that motion? So I see no speakers to that, so all those in favor? And that passes. Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Amos. I just want to thank Superintendent Beerman and her entire department, and all the senior admin and trustees. I know that the budget process is a very cumbersome, difficult, and long, long process, and I know that Superintendent Beerman's department was a bit short-staffed during this process, so I think a great personal gratitude to Superintendent Beerman for this budget and her hard work and her departments, and for everybody in the room for doing, for their work on it. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo Director Miller's comments and thank Superintendent Beerman and everyone involved because we had a number of workshops that we did discussions, and we had trustee input, and I believe this year's process was even smoother, and the budget was even more laid out, better laid out than it had been in previous years. And so thank you very much for all the hard work that went into that, and thank you. Now you can go write some checks, but really appreciate it. Thank you very much Superintendent Beerman. So our next item is the Special Education Plan. Superintendent Zonfield, report 16084 on page 59 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Zonfield.
Thank you. Through the chair, trustees, this came before you two meetings ago, if you may recall, and then with the trustee direction, it's been deferred until now after the budget has passed, or sorry, at least for the budget vote. And you'll note that the report has been revised with the change that you requested. It's right, I guess it's the third last paragraph in the report where it states the special education plan would be amended to reflect any changes in programs and services resulting from approval of the 2016-17 budget. Otherwise, the plan is as you've seen it before, or sorry, this report is as you've seen it before. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to put the motion on the floor first. Be resolved that the Halton District School Board approved the special education plan 2016-2017 as amended. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Gabens. Discussion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Zonfield. Thank you for that amendment to the report. In the information that was circulated around the discussion about how it's a living document and how we were going to do the timing of all of these things, one of the things that came up was that there is a report that is to be sent to the ministry in the fall, and I wondered whether it would be appropriate if, when that report is sent, tabled, whatever, if the trustees could at some point through some kind of reporting system perhaps see what it is you actually send, rather than whether or not it's the little spec ed plan that's on the website, or whether it's some other document so that we would know exactly what it is that is sent. Thank you.
Sure. Through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope. Certainly, it's the, the report to the ministry is actually just a checklist where we're indicating that we have complied with each standard, or the chapters of the plan, if you want to call them that, are referred to as standards by the ministry. So it's just a checklist that we indicate that we've met all those requirements and that it reflects any changes, and then we simply include a link to our plan on the website is what the ministry asks. So it's basically a two-page checklist that we send back that can certainly be shared with trustees.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers? Can't get there from here. All those in favor? And that passes. Thank you very much. All right. So our next item- All right. So our next item is our Program Viability Report. Associate Director Boge, report 16096 on page 61 of your board package. Welcome, Associate Director Boge.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And for trustees, I sent out a presentation. I'm sorry to presentation you two pieces here, but I thought it, it may be helpful just to do a few slides by way of summary prior to the discussion today. And I promise to keep this brief. Thanks, Superintendent Zonoffeld. So just by way of highlighting where we've traveled over this journey, it's been quite extensive. We started, we identified two key issues that we were tasked to address. And this is well-known now, the challenge with hiring high-quality French-qualified teachers and the issues that we're experiencing in our dual-track schools with our small English cohorts. We established a committee. This committee worked for over 15 months. The committee had a whole host of members with a considerable years of experience in the area of French immersion. So lots of brain power at that committee. And we've worked on this for a considerable period of time. Stakeholder consultation. This is something that actually was a question from, I think trustee Al Harrison was to, asked us to share sort of the consultation and communication pieces that went out. And that went out to trustees. This was a really involved process with consultation with many, many different stakeholders. I think it was a model process in terms of community engagement, that sort of thing. I thought I would just, I know you can't read these slides, but this is what went out to trustees. And this PowerPoint will go on the board website. So there's four pages showing the consultation. I'm just whipping through this because I know you can't read it. But for folks that are interested in the public, this will be on the website for them to have a look at. I think it was a really good process in terms of engaging as many stakeholders as we could. I think trustees know that we've traveled through a number of different options. We started, the PVC started with 14 different options. We whittled that down to four that we put out for stakeholder feedback. Director Miller and his community presentations was really clear that these four options were for feedback purposes. We couldn't put 14 out. It would be just too cumbersome. So these were four to gather feedback. And in those presentations, we talked about new and hybrid options that might come forward through that feedback. This was also addressed on our Q and A on the website saying that new and hybrid options would be absolutely considered. Through our, our travels in the Program Viability Committee, we did look at some models of French immersion delivery in other boards across the province. And by and large, the majority of boards across the province have a, a model, the majority have a model that have a higher intensity early entry model. So that's where the two additional options came up. And that was through the work of the Program Viability Committee. So we had the four. We saw two other potential options based on what we're seeing around the province. That brought us up to six options. And then those were narrowed down to three, which are in the board package. And then, of course, one option is being recommended. Some things to just leave, some, I guess, some final thoughts or considerations to leave with trustees. We know that this is a really complex issue. We've been chewing on it and debating it and discussing it and, and researching for, for 15 months. And there are conflicting thoughts on where we should land. There's competing priorities depending on, and we heard some of those through our delegations. And I'm, I'm sure trustees have heard some of these competing perspectives as well with some of the email and phone traffic that you have. Depending on whether we're talking to an advocate for the English side of the program or the French side, we're going to get different perspectives. And, and all perspectives are valuable. So we learn from those. Our task was to really ensure viability in both English and French. And we tried to keep that lens on the work so that we are solving both issues that were identified. We know that there's no, we can't see into the future. We know that with any option, there may still be some challenges that we'll have to look at and deal with as we move forward. So that's, that's just a bit of a reality. So we put forward our very best option to address the issues that the PVC was tasked with. A big piece of that work was around implementation, timeline, disruption to the system. So I just wanted to leave that with trustees. We really looked at, you know, we talked all about good pedagogy, French acquisition, all that important, those important pieces for kids, but we also looked at families. So how long will this model take for us to implement, to start to implement? When will we know whether we've achieved the goals? Those are really important pieces. And I think with the option proposed, we've got a pretty short timeline to understand the impact of this model. In terms of practicality, we're not waiting a, a large amount of time to get into the work. We're not disrupting families when we look at the boundary review situations and that kind of, some of those practical pieces that we know cause angst for families. So those were big pieces of, of this recommendation as well. And where we wanted to land was really, what is the best option for us here in Halton? And each board looks quite different, as we all know. We needed to look at our models of school, our demographics, our staffing procedures and so on. And what was the best model for us in Halton? And option six was the one that's put forward. And this is outlined in the report. And this just provides, again, a quick summary of the pieces, the important pieces that we thought were really valuable with this particular option. We did listen to our stakeholders in terms of early entry. That was an important piece for us. We, we heard from them that early entry was a preference. So this is maybe not the grade one early entry that we have now, but it is still early compared to the grade four model, which we, which was on the table as well. Very little disruption around boundary reviews. It does allow for grandparenting of our current students. So that's a very, a very seamless process to allow kids who are currently in our FI model without disrupting them. So they can grandparent out of their program as we implement the new program with minimal disruption to the system. That one-year wait that we've got is really important because we've got some work to do. Wherever we landed, we would have work to do around curriculum, resources, staff development and, and those kinds of things. So this also gives us a, a little bit of time. There's not a ton of time here, but some time to work on those pieces so that we're ready to, to put forward our very best program. And those are my comments by way of kind of summary comments. I'm happy to answer any questions and I'll turn it back to you, trustee. Chair Amos.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Wait till the lights come on so you can see me. Or maybe you don't want the lights on to see me. I don't know. I have a few comments to add to Associate Director Boge's presentation. The first thing is I want to thank the leadership of Associate Director Boge and the entire Program Viability Committee, which included three trustees, trustee Oliver, trustee Papin, and trustee Graves as well, and the leadership of the trustees here as well. The Program Viability Committee, I will elaborate a little bit more, was composed of principals in our system, many of whom were bilingual and many of whom had taught in French immersion, but all of whom had worked in French immersion schools. So their, their expertise and their knowledge of the program, their knowledge of the impact on schools was important and, and heard. I also wanted, because this can be misconstrued, this whole program viability. It was very deliberately called program viability because it was not about French immersion. It's about creating a viable program for students in the core English program and for students who choose to go into French immersion. It would appear publicly, and many we have been, this has been commented, that it's about French immersion. There's no question that our current French immersion program has been successful. It's 50, 50, 50% in French, 50% in English. It's been successful because so many students choose it. There's an unintended consequence of that. And the unintended consequence is why the Program Viability Committee was set up, to address the two major issues that faces the board and face many of the schools and almost all of our students. And it was a two-pronged issue. The first prong was that students who have chosen not to go into French immersion and remain in the English core program have often in our primary school, in our primary grades, but in many of our schools, have very few students. We have currently 22 of our elementary schools with less than 15 students in the grade one primary English program. That's a challenge for us. It's a challenge for those kids and it's a challenge for their parents. And we know school is about academic achievement, but everybody in this room knows that it's also about developing social aspects of their lives and learning how to live together and so on. Those kids, the prospect of them carrying on is quite extensive, just with the same students year after year after year. And I think everybody appreciates that that's a challenge and we had to address it. The second challenge was the ability to recruit enough quality, and I emphasize quality, French immersion teachers to support the burgeoning numbers of French immersion students in our, our schools. It's a challenge. We've, we've presented data at PVC and it's in the package for trustees showing that virtually every one of our principals have reported difficulties in hiring French immersion teachers. Personally, I had challenges when I was a principal in a secondary school getting good quality French immersion teachers. So that was part of it. When I did the public presentations and the presentations at CAC and Student Senate and various other presentations, I talked about this being a twofold process. The first process is we are presenting the problem. I believe strongly that the community is just as clever, if not clever, in fact, almost everybody's cleverer than me. If I present the problem and we present the issues we're facing, we will get good information back. We will get good solutions back. So when we talked, when I talked, I guess, at those meetings, I presented that every single time. This was about engaging the community to help us solve a problem. And by and large, the community embraced that. The second part of that was essentially an experiment in community engagement. And we engaged the community. We had lots of people participate. And I could, I can honestly say that the temperature being around the volatility, because this can be a very polarizing subject, as everybody knows, was very low indeed. We had earnest people providing earnest information and consultation to the Program Viability Committee. And I can honestly say that I believe that the community has embraced the concept that we tried to do and have embraced the fact that we had a problem and we were trying to solve it. We weren't trying to pick on French immersion, not at all. We were trying to solve an issue that we had in this board. And I think most people appreciated that that's what we were trying to do. Now, having said all that, I know that the trustees have a hugely complex and difficult decision to make. And I also know that the trustees will be subject to criticism. They will be subject to challenges to what they were thinking. And those challenges will be, we didn't communicate enough. The process wasn't good enough. Well, we, we said all along, the process was about consultations, giving us information. The four options we put up there were to provide a framework for discussion. As Associate Director Boge said, we couldn't put all 14 up. We wouldn't have a framework of discussion. Four up, and then we garnered information and advice and consultations around that. And we said all along, and I was very upfront about this at every meeting, and it was on our website, et cetera, that it was about new options would emerge based on the information we received. I'm fully aware that French immersion is an optional program. And there are those in the community that believe we should, we should be, the way in which we support an optional program should not be with as much enthusiasm as we currently do, I guess is a euphemistic way to describe it. But it's an optional program. We in the HDSB believe in choice and challenge for kids. And we want kids to choose. We want them to have options, kids and their families. And as we're able to do, we want to do. If we had the capacity to have every one of our students be in a French immersion program and every parent and every child wanted to be in a French immersion program, I think everybody around the inner table and the outer table would support that. But that's not the reality of what we're facing. So we are aware it's an optional program. But by the same token, our core program is English in the English language. And we cannot have an optional program impede the ability for the students who have chosen not to go in French immersion. We have to provide a viable program for students for whatever reason they have chosen to remain in the English program. We have to provide that. There's an absolute duty for us to do that. There's also out there some, shall we call simplistic solutions to this. I kind of live by the credo, always beware of the simple solution. Simple solutions to complex problems are not solutions. I'll give an example. We've heard about stopping busing for FI students. Sounds, sounds on the surface that that would be, that would slow down because we bus our FI students. But what that does is it creates another problem. And it may create a problem of equity. We now then have a choice to make. Do we offer French immersion in every single one of our schools? I think that would be difficult to do. Or do we say that it's still an optional program and it's parents' responsibility to get their kids to the school in which the French immersion is? For some students in our board, that's not an option. So therefore, it is not an optional program for them. They're mandatory. They cannot get there because their parents, for whatever reason, can't get them to a school where there's French immersion. So therefore, it's not a choice. It's not an optional program for those kids. So hence, could busing staunch the flow or the uptake of French immersion kids? It probably could. But it would create an equity issue. And I think we live for equity. I think we had a presentation, we had the words of the Chair of the Board tonight around the situation at, in Orlando and how we believe strongly in inclusion and supporting all kids. We support all kids with the ability or the option to choose French immersion if they can. And they have the means to get there. The other thing is, well, we've, we've heard that, you know, second language acquisition is best at the younger ages, primary grades, maybe JK, so on. I, I don't actually disagree with that. I think that is probably correct. However, the reality is, in order for us to do that, we probably exacerbate the issue we have. So this solution really has come down to a compromise. It's come down to our best compromise that we think addresses the ability for our students to, to acquire a second language. It comes down to being able to, because we think that some parents will have a sober second thought about placing their students in French immersion. And therefore, the uptake problems, challenges that we are currently having will diminish and we'll have less students choosing French immersion. I think it also affords students with special needs, I, I think, I believe that students identified as early as possible, they will have a better option to choose French immersion. We appreciate that we have to do more work to support those students with special needs to choose French immersion. And we will be working with that. Superintendent Zonoffeld will be working with Associate Director Boge to ensure that any student, any student that wants French immersion will get the, the supports they need. So some of the questions that might come out of this is, what if this is unsuccessful and exacerbates the issue? You can read the numbers. If we have the same uptake now, or if we have the same uptake when we offer that program that we're recommending in option six, if we have the same uptake that we currently have, we will have exacerbated the issues that we have. We believe strongly that that will not happen. We think the uptake will be slowed. And we think that parents will choose. Because in part, we do offer primary core French, all those kids will be exposed. I know primary core French does not necessarily lead to, it, it for sure does not lead to the same level of French as students in French immersion. But I would argue now that our 50% model of French immersion is not immersion, it's half immersion. When I go swimming, I'm fully immersed in the water when it's over my head, not when it's to my waist. And currently, we have it 50%. And we need to immerse our students in it, at least for as long as we can. So I would just suggest that to the trustees, I guess, you have a very, very difficult task, a very complex task. I support what the trustees I support what the trustees have given us, that they have given the Program Viability Committee, and I support that you're, I absolutely acknowledge the work that you're doing with your, your communities in trying to bring about the best solution that supports every single one of our students, whether they choose French immersion or whether they remain in English. So I would just say to the trustees, good luck. No. I would, I would just say that we have done our best to try to reach a compromise that supports as many as possible. But the last thing I will say, and this is for the community, primarily for the community, every one of us here is a Democrat, not in the American sense of a Democrat, but we believe in democracy. And the trustees, I don't think they make a poor decision because they deliberate, they debate, they think, and they listen to their constituents. And the democracy is a democracy and the majority, after thoughtful, sober thought, will be the right decision, whatever that decision is. So I've, I've said my little soliloquy. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, Stuart. And I'm going to build on Stuart's comments before I put the motion on the floor. And this is primarily for the community, just as a bit of background. There are four publicly funded school boards, the French Public, the French Catholic, the English Catholic, and the English Public. We're an English public school board and we're the only board who does not have any requirement for admission based on religion or language. It is our responsibility as an English board to have a strong English curriculum that allows all students to learn. Within this curriculum, we do offer optional courses and programs to students. One of these is part of this discussion tonight, French immersion. So as part of French immersion, do you know when your child is in French immersion and then they enter high school, they're required to take 10 credits to get their certificate of immersion? We do not have French immersion high schools. There are credits they're required to take at the high school that offer French immersion courses. The students take four credits in French in grade nine, four credits in French in grade 10, and only one credit in French in both grades 11 and 12. The certificate does not mean they're bilingual. It means they have achieved the requirements needed by completing the courses that are required to, to complete this certificate. As an English public board, we're required to provide an English curriculum for all students and that's part of why we're here tonight. Program viability, the ability to provide a strong English curriculum while still being able to provide students with an optional program, French immersion or others, as a choice. This is a very complex topic, as I'm sure you're well aware, and has been a subject of study from the group for over 15 months. And I would like to thank first Director Miller, because he started this process back a year ago spring, and then Associate Director Bog, and the whole committee and the trustees that were there representing us, because this was a very difficult decision and the topic was long discussion. And I don't believe there was consensus even at that committee about the discussion. Trustees have heard the information from their communities and on Monday, we listened to delegations on the topic and still no clear solution has been supported. And I'm going to let you know that trustees have had long conversations and many sleepless nights over this. It hasn't been easy. Tonight, we'll be discussing it some more and then voting on a recommendation. So on that note, I'm going to put that recommendation on the floor. Be it resolved that the Hilton District School Board adopt option six, grade two entry to the French immersion program at 100% intensity in existing school, single and dual-track schools as outlined in Report 16096. Be it resolved that this model begin in grade two of school year 2018-19. Entry into grade one of our current FI model will cease after the 2016-17 school year and the 2017-18 grade one cohort, cohort.
Cohort.
Thank you, cohort, will be English program only. Be it resolved that students enrolled in our current FI model be grandfathered and allowed to complete elementary school in the current model. Moved by. Trustee Papen, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Discussion. May I ask all trustees be succinct and to the point and try and stay on topic. Trustee Daniele.
Okay, you get the irony of that after all the speeches we've just heard, right? Okay, thank you very much, because we know there's a lot of debate on this, so I'm glad we're finally getting to it. Thank you. Because I have several questions, as you know. I will ask my first one and then I will go back on the list. We heard a great deal of the delegations on Monday, the concern has been raised that parents will see the grade two 100% immersion point as a bump in the road and that they'll ride it out. And as such, the enrollment rate for French immersion will continue to rise and the decline in the English cohort will continue to be an issue. Could I please share your thoughts on that, through you, please?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Daniele. That's a great question. We debated that and talked about that at the PVC committee. My response to that, I think, is our parents are going to be in a much better position to make an informed choice. I think after grade one, having had some exposure to Primary Core French, getting to know their kids a little bit better in a more academic setting and all those things, we're hoping that they're, they're more, they're better armed to make that really important decision. The 100% French for two years, French in math for two years, I think it's going to really encourage parents to have a long, hard look at this one, have some conversation, consult with the teacher prior to making that decision. I'm not sure that they're going to ride it out. Our prediction is that, in fact, the choices that they make will reduce the uptake going into grade three, thank you, and into grade two, and that they, in fact, the choices will be better choices and we're likely to see less attrition down the road as well.
Director Miller.
And I'll add my two cents. Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Daniele. As Associate Director Bog, I'm not going to reiterate what he said about riding it out, but currently, that's exactly what parents do and kids do with the 50-50 model, is it allows it to be ridden out. We believe that this is a much bigger decision for parents and kids. And so I, so just to add to his comments.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I also have multiple questions, so I'm going to go back on the list after this bunch. As you know, I have a single-track French immersion school in my ward. It's morphing into a single-track French immersion school at present. And I asked at the last meeting if going with the grade two start would mean the elimination of grade one at that school, and I was told that yes, it would. And as I expected, there was some consternation in the community about the loss of grade one English. And they requested that I inquire whether or not grade one English could be included at single-track French immersion schools. And also, the other concern at Pineland is the length of the bell times between Mohawk Gardens and Pineland. For those families who have children at both schools, I believe it's 25-minute difference in the bell times. And this consumes quite a bit of parent time at drop-off and pickup during the day. And when we originally asked for a bell time study, HSTS was reluctant to do so because of the PVC that was going on at the time. Now that the PVC is coming to a close, I would hope that a study and a community consultation could be done around the bell times to help the community leave some of this time between the two.
Thanks for that question, trustee Collard. I think there's two questions there. To address the first part first, about grade one, I think the suggestion was that grade one be allowed to stay at Pineland. I guess I would wonder whether we would be suggesting that that could occur in all single-track school. I think it's problematic. It's, for a couple of reasons, there's some practical pieces around just capacity. Many of our single-track schools, including Pineland, are quite full with maximum portables, so adding more grades back in, I think, is going to cause additional accommodation pressures. I think I could say the same for a couple of our FI, single-track schools in Oakville. The big issue, though, that would cause a problem for us is if we add grade one to the school, the school's no longer a single-track French immersion school, now becomes a dual-track school, essentially, because there's English and French program there. With the recent legislation that came out, if we have a dual-track school that has a grade one class in it, we are obligated to offer kindergarten. So this is a package deal. We would have to add grade one and kindergarten. So now we've added even more accommodation pressure. And again, it's not been our, typically been our delivery model in a dual-track school to just have JK, SK in grade one. So I think that would cause us some challenges down the line, in addition to the accommodation pressures that it would, it would cause. In terms of the bell times, I'm, I'm not sure what happened. I don't have the history on that, but I think we'd be quite prepared to go back to and look at the, the sort of time dynamics there, if things are out of whack by 25 minutes, and talk to HSTS now that we've landed, or when we land on the, on the new French immersion model, and go back and revisit that conversation, because there may be some, some wiggle room to make some adjustments there.
Thank you. I'll go back on the list.
Thank you. Trustee Papen.
Thank you. Through Chair Amos, to Associate Director Bog. I am concerned with student success for identified children of special needs, special education needs. Hilton District School Board has provided special supports and accommodations in the past, just as they have for any student that requires such accommodation in any program. Can you tell us how this teacher training and support will continue in the future with respect to the changes that are being made in English and French immersion programs moving forward?
Yeah, I'll start off and then I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Zonaville. Maybe just to frame this, when we provide special education training for teachers and staff in our system, there's typically a whole different, a variety of different venues and types of training that occur. Large-scale venue training, in-school training, coaching, all kinds of things. And Superintendent Zonaville can, can talk to us about that. We don't typically differentiate based on French or English, because all teachers are special ed teachers in a sense, and we want that training to land with all of our teachers. So I'm not sure that there'll be a change in practice here, but maybe Superintendent Zonaville can give us a little bit more of a clearer perspective in terms of what does that training look like.
Through the chair, to trustee Papen. So as Associate Director Bog mentioned, we, we offer professional development in many ways. And a student with, for example, a learning disability or with autism or whatever that exceptionality might be, those needs are the same, whether they be in English or in French. So the types of training that, or the ways that we offer training, we do that certainly on our professional activity days. Also, lunch and learns and small groups occur in schools with a lot of frequency. We provide networking opportunities for our, for our teachers. We do very specific student coaching, you know, side-by-side with teachers in the classroom so that the teachers have that modeling and support from student services staff regionally. And then we do very specific training things through our multi-disciplinary teams and then specific training around exceptionalities such as autism and our UMAP training, et cetera. So all those specific trainings would continue and regardless of language of instruction, we provide that support for staff.
Thank you. I'll go back on the list.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you, Chair. Currently, kindergarten teachers are not allowed to recommend or discourage senior kindergarten students from entering French immersion in grade one. There was some discussion at the June 1st meeting and alluded to again today, that the grade two start would allow for some dialogue to occur between teachers and parents if their child is suitable. Are the current constraints on senior kindergarten teachers going to be lifted for the grade one teachers under option six?
Thanks for that question, trustee Oliver. I'm not aware that there are restrictions on our kindergarten teachers. And I'm going to maybe, in a moment, I'll turn that over to Superintendent Selmini to respond to that. I'm not aware, in a, in a perfect world, we understand that parents will make those decisions, so now it would be a grade one to grade two, and we respect decisions of parents. That conversation between parents and grade one teacher is something that we would certainly encourage. And so we could certainly build in some process pieces, some communication to families, when it comes time to be making those decisions, to, to have some dialogue with teachers, make sure that they understand the teacher perspective and, you know, have that conversation, because I think that adds value. The other piece that trustee L Harrison brought up last meeting as well is in terms of other resources to help parents make those informed decisions. And so we have started working on that in terms of resources in the board website as well, just to help parents with those, with those decisions. The teacher piece is really important, for sure. I don't know, Superintendent Selmini, whether you can comment on that, on trustee Oliver's comment around JK, kindergarten teachers making recommendations.
Through you, Chair, to trustee Oliver. Certainly, our model has been inclusion in the French immersion programs and in all French programs, and that is the model from the province. We do have a companion guide that accompanies the FSL framework now that we can partner with Superintendent Zonaville and his team with to make sure that we are being inclusive. So that has been the model. And your commentary about SK teachers and their discussions with parents would probably be framed around that, because it is a parental choice. In our implementation plan of this model, we would certainly be looking at helping parents to make an informed decision and they would have that grade one year in addition to the kindergarten years to really get to know their children as learners and have those conversations with teachers about their learning skills, about their achievement, so that they can make a better informed decision. And we have talked briefly, because we don't have the implementation plan yet, about creating some resource for families so that they are ultimately feeling like they're making a good decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the committee, the trustees, Director Miller, Associate Director Bog, and to the HDSB community for your ideas and insights. It was with great interest that I learned that the recommendation was not one of the four originally put forward. And I think that you've really attempted to bring together a diversity of research and opinion. So I have a couple of comments and maybe a question wrapped in here. The report states, grade one is an important year for students to learn to read in English, and this additional time will allow teachers and parents to acquire a better understanding of the student as a learner in a more typical classroom and understand whether French immersion is the right fit. So I'm really curious about what we mean by the right fit, and I think this is really important, and what we feel people should understand about their learners. To me, it's critical to intentionally try to achieve an FI program that's equitable for a diverse range of learners, and similarly, that all classrooms, whether they be French or English, have diversity. In this regard, I asked previously, as you just said, about creating a resource or resources for families to help them to make this critical decision, because it's something that often they're contemplating for years in advance. These resources have to be available 24/7 and point people, highlight our core French program and our FI programs, as well as current research and discourse about French language and acquisition. I believe it's critical that we also reflect that there's multiple pathways to achieving French language proficiency, some of which will work better in particular family scenarios, and that we need to assure people that later entry does not mean that we're trying to weed out students who have learning challenges. So I'm very pleased to hear that these resources are going to be, are being worked on, and I feel it's a really, really critical and foundational piece of our, of our implementation plan. And secondly, and quickly, I'm down to 38 seconds, I think it's equally as important that we immediately reestablish an ongoing working group to look at how we can continue to improve our French language programs as we move forward to ensure the viability in an ongoing way. We may need to explore other options in order to supplement the, the choices that we have on the table currently, and there's a number of options out there in other jurisdictions. So I would therefore like to just confirm your intent to reestablish the committee at this point. Thanks.
Wow, that was timed right. Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee L Harrison. As I said on June 1st, it is our plan, well, we, not, it's our plan, we will be reconstituting the French Advisory Committee to help us with that. As you know, it was suspended for this year's, and so we could get through the program viability process, but it will be reconstituted to help us with that. But I also want to touch on some, another comment you made about inclusion. And, and one of the reasons we've suggested... And and one of the reasons we've suggested it's it there's there's a myriad of suggestions why it's grade two, but one of the other ones is exactly what you said, is so that students with special needs can be included in the in in French immersion if they if they they and their families so choose, well, their families so choose being at that age because at least they will have had a year in grade one and 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 some of their needs would have been better identified so that they could be better supported in grade two French immersion, so.
Can I add, Chair Amos?
Yes, you can.
Just to Director Miller's comments, this, when we talk about sort of know the learner and know the student's profile, this is not about weeding out or around special education needs. We believe very strongly that the program is for all kids who choose it. Understanding the learner might be things like, you know, is this little person interested in reading? Do they like to take risks and are they do they like challenges? Do they like oral, right? And have they had a good experience in their primary core program? Are they interested in French? Those kinds of things. We know that engagement is really wrapped up in student interest in that kind of thing. So it's really more those kinds of characteristics, I think, that are the fit rather than an ability kind of piece.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through Chair Amos, to Associate Director Boe. I want to say first of all, many thanks to the many community members that have responded to the request from trustees to give input. I know in Halton Hills, I was inundated for the last five or six days with lots of of comments and lots of questions. Associate Director Boe, the shortage of teachers with qualifications to teach French is is it's being experienced right around the province. However, a recent Ontario College of Teachers report stated that just only two years ago, between 30 and 40% of recent teacher graduates with French qualifications were either unemployed or underemployed. Associate Director Boe, would you please outline some of the challenges that the Halton District School Board has experienced in recruiting and hiring high-quality French teachers?
Sure. Thanks, trustee Gray. And through Chair Amos, to you and other other trustees, we have a very high bar in terms of the hiring process. So we're looking for things like good pedagogy, classroom management, knowledge of the curriculum, and really good French skills, proficient oral and written skills, those kinds of things. So certainly, that's a big piece when we go to recruit teachers. We are not just settling on a teacher who's got a piece of paper that says that they, you know, graduated from a French program, those kinds of things. So we do have a very high bar in Halton. I think our numbers were something like 300 and 378 applicants this year. We interviewed 233, and we've all put offers out around 90, somewhere in that range. So you can see that we really are looking at the very best, which is what we would expect for all of our all of our teachers and around hiring. Some of the reasons, though, that prospective French teachers make it difficult for them to to be employed and hired, often we're out looking for French teachers from far away. We, as we, I think has been shared, we we traveled to Quebec and all over the province. New grads often don't have any way to get here, quite honestly. They don't have a vehicle. They haven't got a full-time job, so they're not able to buy a vehicle. So there's some barriers there. As we know with the new regulations, you got to get on a long-term occasional list before you can get on a permanent, get a permanent job. And so often, young graduates are looking at making a commitment somewhere to work part-time if they're on a supply list or occasional work with not without a permanent contract. And so that's a big leap for them if they're leaving their community to come to Halton. Then there are other situations around folks who are really only have some limits around where they can where they're prepared to work, even which schools they're prepared to work in, some of those pieces. I don't know if Executive Officer McFadden might want to add anything else there. Those were some of the challenges that we hear from our recruiting folks as they're as they're working through the process.
I think you hit on the on the high points, particularly the proficiency in the language that we insist on here in for our French immersion program. I could only think of one other, and that is that as you as we're part of the the GTA and the cost of living for a new student is higher here than it would be in an outlying northern Ontario community, for example, but the teacher's salary is almost within the dollar the same on the salary grid. So it's much more cost-effective for a new teacher to live outside the GTA where there might be a better a better chance. They're not doing as much hiring as we are, but for a French teacher, they're as in demand as they would be in the GTA. Thank you.
Director Miller.
Through your Chair Amos, to trustee Gray. Just so trustees are aware and the community as well, early on in the Program Viability Committee, we had a presentation from former Superintendent of Programs Dyson, Trish Dyson, on quality teaching. And it was decided at Program Viability that one of the lenses that we would look at around this was putting quality French immersion teachers or core French teachers in front of kids, not just because they could speak the language, but they had to be, as Associate Director Boe suggested, just not be able to have a certificate in French. So that bar was held high, and the Program Viability, that was one of the lenses that we looked at. And I would I would suggest this is a provincial problem. It is not just a Halton District School Board issue. It's it's out there in other boards as well. And other boards are wrestling with the same issues we are for the same reasons, so.
Thank you. Trustee Garbans.
Thank you, Chair Amos. First, I'd like to thank the Program Viability Committee for finding a creative solution to try to ensure robust English streams in our schools and to preserve the ability to hire excellent qualified teaching staff for our French immersion classrooms. This process has been going on, as we hear, for over a year and with much consultation with parents, students, staff, and other interested parties. The broad research and reports the PBC provided to the trustees was relevant, yet conflicting. The issue is complex, and there's no obvious perfect solution. In light of everything I have seen and heard, I support the recommendation of grade two French immersion entry with 100% intensity, grade three at 80% intensity, and grade four through it at 50% intensity, all within a mix of dual and single-track schools without capping. I support this recommendation for a number of reasons. First, the recommendation listens to parents with regards to wanting a primary entry point. Second, the recommendation supports the consultation results that spoke loudly to parents' disdain for implementing any capping system. Third, though there may be boundary changes, this scenario provides minimal disruption to the system for students. Fourth, one year can make a difference for identifying children in the need of in need of educational supports. Currently, parents must make their decision to place their children in French immersion when their children are in senior kindergarten. When I had to decide, the decision felt very awkward and steeped in peer pressure, and it didn't feel informed. One a one-year grace period would have allowed me to observe my children and confer with their teachers in their regular classroom environment before committing to French immersion, and this would have made a world of difference for me. Finally, we live in a very vocal, passionate region, and mobilization is evident when those passions are sparked. We have seen this in the past with extremely long delegation nights regarding boundary changes and other issues. We see the delegations in letters when people believe that we are wrong-headed on an issue. I know I braced myself for a long list of delegations for Monday night. The long evening did not materialize. We saw only 10 delegations, and nearly half were in reasonable agreement with the recommendation. People don't delegate when they like what they see. People usually delegate to point out the flaws in a proposal. I interpret the lack of numerous delegations on this issue as a demonstration of silent support for the recommendation in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Trustee Garbans spoke very eloquently and touched on some of the points that I wanted to make. So I'll I'll cut to the chase and say as well that I will be supporting the recommendation this evening. It it's been a long few weeks, and I feel like my life has been on hold because I've been just processing all of the information coming into this and agonizing over this. But much of the feedback I've been hearing, both from parents who have children in the French program and children who are in the the English stream, is that this is a good compromise, and I'm hearing it from from both of those those groups. So that's that's saying to me that there there has been a good effort here to to listen to the community and and to make a recommendation that will satisfy our needs. So with with that in mind, I do I do have one question because I do want to make sure that this will solve the the issues that that we have been struggling with. And I do apologize, but I'm I'm going to use very plain language here. When we're when we're talking about program viability, I I am going to talk about a decrease in uptake because that that's what is needed to keep both programs viable, and and I won't make any apologies for that. So my question is, through your chair, to Associate Director Boe, what percentage decrease in uptake would be needed for option six to be successful in terms of viability, particularly particularly of the English program?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Vice Chair Graves. The the model put forward has a slight increase in instructional time in French, about 7.5%. Anything, any reduction in uptake above 7.5% would help our situation. So we could guess around, you know, a number in terms of where we'd like to land, but anything less than seven and seven and a half percent is going to alleviate our challenge around hiring of qualified French teachers because that's going to reduce the number of the amount of instructional minutes in French requiring French instructors. And any reduction is going to help support our dual-track English cohorts. If we look at the math, you can you can do some scenarios, run scenarios, if it was a 20% reduction and you look at numbers, that makes a significant impact on those English cohorts in dual-track schools. It's a little bit diff, it's a little bit hard to predict because each school has a different uptake rate, and each school has a different sized cohort of currently kindergarten kids to draw from in the new model, grade one kids to draw from. So it's hardest to to pinpoint an exact figure, but I guess, you know, anything above seven and a half is going to help our situation, and we would hope that we're going to see a significant significantly larger reduction in the uptake than seven and a half.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair. Could you help us understand, please, does this recommendation affect the rollout in any way of the core French program? As we know, there's about 42 schools who are set to receive the core French grade one program, and does is there any risk whatsoever to that to that program?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Reynolds. No, essentially, no. Next year, we've got a number of schools on board, and then the following year, we have 28 schools remaining, and that would take that would have us fully implemented in primary core before the grade two cohort starts the following year.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, to Associate Director Boe. We we know that we had a great deal of community consultation on options one to four, and we know we have not had the same level depth of community consultation around option six. My question is, can you please describe what, if any, consultation we've had with our special education advisory committee and our parent involvement committee around option six? And if there has been none, what the implications would be of deferring this decision until the fall to allow us to have that consultation, both with our community as well as our two advisory committees?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Daniele. Consultation all happened in the initial phase around the four options. So we did consult with CAC, and we did consult with school councils by, you know, in terms of the PIC idea. We haven't gone back out to the community with option six after we landed with a recommendation, so we've not done that. But we feel that through the feedback received in the initial consultation, we have a pretty good sense of where the community lies on this. A deferral of the decision to provide that time to do some consultation next year would be problematic. We're looking at sort of the pieces that have to fall together to implement the proposed recommendation, so. And there's a variety of pieces to that. For example, we've got some curriculum to develop. We've we are will now have some French in some subject areas that we've not typically taught in French in grade two. So that'll be a big curriculum piece, and that'll be part of this school programs department, organizing teachers to get together to write that curriculum and and roll that out. We'll have resources as well connected to that. So either development of resources, a lot of that could happen in-house, or to purchase resources and to review those resources before we endorse them as being appropriate. There's there's lots of different pieces that we currently have sort of taken for granted in English that we'll need a French equivalent for. So that resource piece will take us some time to to search out and or develop. Then there's a training piece for our staff. If we want folks up and running and ready when we implement, there's a big piece there, and that'll take us some time. Providing some time for consultation around special education needs, providing time for updating of the of resources around the board website, some of those pieces to help parents make decisions. So again, lots of time pieces. The big one for next year, and this will have to happen next year, is around staffing. A 2018 start to that grade two French immersion group means that in 2017, we've got teachers who currently will be teaching French, who will, when grade one is a complete English program in 1718, that's going to cause some staffing challenges. And so we need time to prepare, plan for that, and look at what some of those implications are. There may be some conversations with our our union leaders around that process because that'll be a big change for us having grade one move, teachers who are typically doing a French program, who are now potentially doing some English or maybe looking at a different kind of assignment. So those are some of the immediate pieces that if we defer the decision and and have to move into next year without having landed, that's going to cause some difficulty.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I also have some questions about program, and I appreciate the questions that have already come regarding students with special education needs. That reduces my list of questions. I have been contacted by a parent in my ward who wondered what will happen with split grade classes when we have a 100% grade two, 80% grade three, and 50% grade four, and what resources and professional development will be made available to teachers for instruction of French in all subjects in grade two?
I'm going to start off and then look over to Superintendent Salmini. We currently, in our current model, have a bit of a challenge around grade three, four right now, where prior to the primary core French, our grade three program has been English, and then grade four starts with 200 minutes of French instruction. So where we've had those split classes, we've we've found a way to to manage that, usually by pulling the one group away from the other group so that they can get their their minutes in French. And that's that happens through our some creative timetabling and some staffing pieces through human resources. So it the the new grade three, four problem, or the two, three challenge, where they've got different amounts of French, will be a similar kind of problem. So I'm going to ask Superintendent Salmini if she can comment on that that a little bit because she'll be able to explain that much better than I because she's lived it. And then I think the second part of the question is around resources and that sort of thing for the teachers. Yes?
Yeah, so just to to add to that, as part of our implementation plan, we would be looking to other districts that have a similar model to look at how they've handled split grade classes at those levels. Our initial thinking is that we would look to our core French model as a as a basis, but we may come up with other options that would be more successful, and so we would look to do that. In terms of resources, we know that our implementation plan will involve the creation of resources and much staff development, and so we're committed, and that's why we really do need the time to be able to put those things in place so that we are doing our research around what other boards are doing, that we're taking time to plan, that we are not making quick decisions in terms of the resources that we're purchasing, and that we really survey our teaching staff to see what their learning needs are so that we can be responsive to them.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, I have also heard concerns about math instruction in grade two being in French and potentially as well in grade three, and I was wondering if you could address that concern.
For this one, again, I'll I'll look over to Superintendent Salmini, who's got more expertise. For this one, again, I'll, I'll look over to Superintendent Salminia who's got more expertise here.
So that will be a switch, um, and that is the area that we would be devoting most of our time to in terms of professional development for our teachers because we do have teachers that have been teaching the French immersion program that haven't, um, been teaching, uh, math. And so we're well aware that that would be a, a big area of professional development and our department would be, uh, committed to tackling that, um, so that there isn't an issue. And our, uh, plan would be to have grade two and three, um, in, um, uh, French for math. Um, and part of the reasoning is we're also considering EQUAO in grade three. And if we did both years in, uh, French, then they would be, um, uh, positioned to be able to write that assessment in the French language.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Director Miller.
Uh, thank you, Chair. It's just a, a comment on the math. Um, there's a belief that, um, students have more difficulty with, um, math and French than they do with math in English. Part of the issue in the past, because we haven't been doing it for a year, is because we had the 50% model. So arguably, out of that 50%, part of it was in math. So therefore, you could argue that the students were not exposed to enough French to deal with the French, uh, the math in French because they were only getting 50% of their day in French and part of that was in math. So with 100% French, they will have enough language exposure that it should make the math an easier prop, uh, proposition for them. Uh, I'm not an elementary person, as you know, I was a secondary, but the school I was a principal at always had math and French. And, uh, the students in that cohort did just as well, if not better, than the students in the English cohort, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Found the appropriate spot for my comments. Um, thank you, uh, through you, Madam Chair, to, uh, Associate Director Boe for your committee and previously Director Miller's committee, the Program Viability Committee, for all of this work. Um, I know it seems like we just get finished one and then we restart it. So, um, I too am happy that we are reconstituting the French Advisory Committee as a previous trustee, uh, on that. I found it very useful to find out and share and particularly the teachers that, um, volunteer their time to that committee. It's very useful. So we at the Hilton District School Board are often trailblazers. Uh, we like to use the verb haltenize, uh, for what works here. And we take an idea and we make it work for halten. And I think that's a very good, um, summary of what we're trying to do here. French immersion is really popular, uh, for various reasons. Um, we have a lot of demand here and we've had a lot of conflicting, um, opinions on how to fix the problem. The program viability, uh, emphasis has been, uh, a nice one to say that it is both the English program and the French program that are important and that we're trying to solve that. I would like to suggest that, um, perhaps we could, and this would be in the form of a slight amendment to the recommendation that will be put on, that is on the table, um, that perhaps we contemplate core English for the grade two French immersion. When I say it's a slight amendment, the math works out to be, um, somewhere between three and five percent, depending on whether it's 50 minutes a week or 75 minutes a week. Um, I suggested perhaps 75 minutes a week because planning time, um, for teachers can be, um, in 25-minute increments, so three times 25 or 150, like whichever. That means that would be a, not using French planning time teachers, but English planning time teachers might also help the, um, number of teachers we're trying to find to staff the 100%. Um, so the idea is that this minimal amount of classroom time would officially allow teachers to send home reading books, spelling lists, writing journals, perhaps do some English reading assessments. Um, we, I believe, not an educator, but I believe a parent who has a child in 100% FI would be helping their children at home continue their English reading, preparing for the English grade three EQUAO. And this way, we could maintain a, um, a slight, uh, connection to that. To, any comment?
Sure. Through you, uh, Madam Chair, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Um, maybe I would start by saying we, we have no concerns around the English development of, of kids in this model. They've had, uh, they will, they will have had three years, SK, uh, JKS K grade one in English. They will be 100% French in grade two and then they'll have their English again, um, in that 20% in grade three. Um, English development for kids in a, in a fully immersed French program is very well researched. Um, and as, as I mentioned earlier, many of the boards have, uh, 100% grade one, two and three. Uh, the skills that kids learn in the French program are those kinds of transferable skills. So they learn about decoding, they learn about sentence structure, they learn listening, uh, speaking skills and that part of the brain develops even though it's in French. When they switch over to English, the English, um, uh, the learning of the English content is accelerated and that French actually reinforces the learning of the, of the second language. So with one year in, fully immersed in French, we're not worried about the English at all. We, um, uh, kids are immersed in English outside of school as well. And so they're reading things, they're reading menus, they're looking at signs, they're speaking, listening. Um, the, the English, we don't see as an issue at all. So I'm, I'm not sure I'd be supportive. It, it causes a, a little bit of a wrinkle in terms of timetables as well for principals who are already, uh, might be managing some split grades that they're going to have to be creative at and now, um, adding another little twist in terms of adding an English piece into the timetable. So, uh, I'm not sure that, from a staff perspective, we would be supportive of that.
Director Miller?
Through Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. I concur with, um, uh, Associate Director's remarks. And I think, um, I'll just emphasize, we are not concerned about their English development. These kids are at school in a sea of English. Um, it's spoken out in this playground, it's spoken in the halls, they watch it on TV. And mo, you know, even though we have many ELL learners, uh, many, many ELL learners where English is the second language, um, and they're exposed to their own language in their home, whatever their language would be, we find that as they go through, that English does not become a problem. And one of the problem, one of the reasons for that is because of the constant exposure. And the research shows that it's, uh, schools in of themselves do not really create bilingual kids. What they do is give a very solid background and grounding for students and exposure to the language outside of the school is what solidifies the bilingualism. So we're not concerned about it. The other issue I think, and it's been said here about, I think it might change the thinking of parents around the decision whether to go into French immersion or not. And I'd be concerned that we're almost creating a very similar situation as to what we already are in because they would have approximately 20% of their day in English or 5%.
Five.
But I still think that that 5% would in, when, would encourage a less serious thought. I'm speculating, but I, I would, I would bet, I would speculate that that would create less serious thought about the decision whether to go into fully immersion or, uh, a 95%. Yeah, like what did you have, 96% or something? You worked it out, but, uh, but like, I guess the bottom line is here, I'm, I'm with Associate Director Boe on this. I'm not concerned at all about their English language development, um, around that.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, uh, Chair Amos. We are here tonight to resolve two key reasons behind the work of the PBC. Number one, challenges in finding qualified and high-quality French teachers. And number two, imbalance between the English and French programs, which results in very small English cohorts in dual-track schools. I am in favor of option three as the option that addresses these two key issues. And I'm in favor of it for the following five reasons. Preservation of the concept of a neighborhood school. Feedback from CAC that recommends this option. All students reaching equal footing by grade four, given a number of intrinsic and extrinsic factors. Importance of student voice and better knowledge of students' learning style and needs. And finally, research supporting that endpoint French language proficiency is equal regardless of whether it is an earlier or later start for FI. However, upon further reflection, discussions with administration and constituents and public delegations, I am willing to consider option six. But this option needs to stand as is, grade two entry with 100% intensity in order for me to support it. And I will bringing, and I will be bringing forward a motion around monitoring, should this recommendation pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question, I have two questions actually. The first one is, uh, from a community member and it's similar to one that was asked earlier, but a little bit different and I want to make sure that I understand the response. And that is, under option six, what is the projected decrease in the number of teachers that are anticipated? I know that's a fairly, there's lots of move, tons of moving parts, but if you could give a sense of what those moving parts are, that would be great. And then the second question is, if we do move forward with this option, we will want to start, um, measuring a number of items. And so I think that perhaps we'll hit on that a little bit later as well. Yep.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee L. Harrison. I'm, I'm going to assume that when you say reduction of teachers, you mean reduction of the need for French teachers because our overall staff complement will remain the same unless our population changes. I, I think maybe just to, the, the simple math of it would be, if we were able, if we were to reduce the uptake by 20%, for example, overall, there's likely to be 20% less instructional minutes of French required because that's going to cause a change in the number of classes, that sort of thing, which, um, would result, which would, uh, result in a similar reduction in French, in the need for French teachers. So a 20% uh, reduction in uptake, 20% less French instruction needed, 20% of a reduction in terms of French teacher strength. Again, we haven't, we haven't, uh, we haven't got a crystal ball. We don't know the exact reduction, so that part will be, uh, remain to be seen to some extent. But whatever that corresponding reduction is, should result in a, uh, that much relief around our French teacher hiring.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, I believe to Superintendent Beerman. Uh, one of the other concerns that we heard was around the cost of busing to French immersion programs. And I wondered if you could please remind me of how the transportation for French immersion students is funded?
Through the chair, the GSN, the Grants for Student Needs, does not specifically have an allocation for French immersion transportation. The board is funded for transportation and through a board policy that was implemented, uh, several years ago, that this decision was made to transport for French immersion. So part of the allocation of the transportation budget then is allocated towards French immersion and that, uh, provides majority of the funding for that program.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
I think I'm last on the list, you'll be happy to know. Um, my question actually stems from the question about, um, the English minutes. And it occurred to me, if we are not having English language instruction at all, um, what will we be teaching in those minutes that we would have taught English? There would have normally been an English period a day, I do believe, in, in a grade two class. What will we be teaching in place of English in that one period a day?
French language. If we think of it as a language period, for kids who are in English program, they're learning English, for kids who are in French, they're learning French.
So it will be a very intensive French language, uh, period then? Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, seeing no further que, uh, speakers, I do have a question. Like many of my colleagues, I've struggled with this because, uh, I actually initially supported a later start and I actually thought a grade three start would be a best compromise because I, I believed it was still early enough, but not as late as grade four, um, the grade four piece, which parents were concerned about. But then I understood, uh, uh, after discussions with, um, various people that this was not an option that even had been presented to the public, had not been shared. And so parent wouldn't be a, a good idea because we were already getting concerns about option six coming forward and, uh, people showing, saying that they hadn't heard about it and that there wasn't any public consultation about it. So, um, based on what I've heard from the community, from anything from status quo and capping to, um, having, um, a late start, it seems that the compromise of a grade two start is one that I can support. But I also feel that we need to be looking at our core French. And I do believe that if we have a truly viable core program, that will provide, fill the need of parents that, who have in the past expressed the need for their children to be exposed to French, but not, um, necessarily going into French immersion. So, um, my question is, if we wanted to expand the core French program for say 10 minutes a, um, week, so it'd be like an extra 400 minutes a year, what would the impact of that be? And, um, I guess we'll leave it at that for the moment.
Through your Chair Amos to, um, um, to Chair Amos. It's like a puppet. Um, most people don't get my jokes, that's, uh. I, I'm going to turn to Superintendent Salminia in a second, but, uh, it is something that we, we could certainly look at. Um, I, I would be hesitant to throw it on the table this evening, but certainly we would not be hesitant to look at it in a future, uh, uh, report. But I'll turn it over to Superintendent Salminia to talk about, uh, the impact.
So just initially, I'm thinking we would really have to take the time to look at the implications for staffing, for timetabling, um, all of those pieces, to see how possible it is and the program implications on the English side because the additional time would be coming, um, out of English programming then. Um, and I'm also thinking about what the implementation plan of that would be while we're also implementing the changes to the F, FI program because it would all be within the same timeframe. But we would be happy to, uh, take that back and take a look at what those implications might be.
So, um, if I bring a motion for you to look into it, is, I'll do that, uh, depending on what, um, happens with the motion that's on the table. Thank you. Are there any further questions around the motion on the table? Going once, going twice. No, I'm just checking because sometimes we have those people pop in at the last minute and I don't want it.
We do, we've got to bet on Dave Boe, so.
Yeah, I need three more questions, about seven minutes to win the pool.
Sorry. Okay, so all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much to everyone involved with this decision. And, and I would like to make a further comment, um, to the director that when this is, as this is being rolled in, out and implemented, can you please make sure you're looking at, um, showcasing all the programs that the children will be going into from grade one as opposed to just one program?
Certainly we will do that. We've, we've started to do that and we will follow through with that. And I believe there's going to be another motion which we will wholeheartedly support at the staff level.
Trustee Oliver.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to
Okay, so at this time, I would like to make my motion. Be it resolved that a grade two entry at 100% intensity is evaluated every year in order to assess if it is resolving French teacher shortage and imbalance in programs at dual-track schools. This will be achieved by a detailed annual analysis after French immersion registration deadline at each school offering this program to evaluate the French immersion class size for program viability. I'm sorry. Never mind. Yes, I'll start again.
Well, wind the tape back and start again.
I had tweaked the wording, so, okay. To begin. Be it resolved that an annual report be added to the report's schedule, starting in 2018, outlining the percentage and number of grade one students in each elementary school that have registered for French immersion or English programs for the following year, and that this report highlight any schools where fewer than 20 students have registered for the grade two English program, and any schools where registration percentages for French immersion have increased substantially from prior years, and provide an action plan to address the enrollment in those schools. This report will be brought to the Board of Trustees prior to staffing deadlines, and I so move.
Thank you, and seconded by trustee Collard. Director Miller.
We support this motion, for two reasons. The first is, we will be gathering that data anyway, because we need to know. And I think it's important, if we're gathering the data, to be transparent, that the Board of Trustees and the public should know that data as well, so we support it. The second reason is, is similar to what came up in the budget around the CAC discussion, around the monitoring of the students who would be normally referred to the learning centers. I think we are going to continue to try to improve our ability to gather data, to help data drive our decisions. So there's two reasons we support that, and that's them. So thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I'm going to piggyback on this comment. So since we're having a report about the number of students, could we also, at some point, investigate, when we get our report on student achievement, also tracking what happens in the next couple of years, and then when we change over to the 100% model? Again, tracking, knowing we're going to track it, rather than, oops, gee, we kind of should have. Because since there didn't seem to be the appetite for the core English, I happen to think that we have just created a somewhat of an equity issue for parents who needed the school's support for their children in their reading or writing, particularly in grade two. Therefore, I'd like us to be tracking how students are doing now, and then tracking how they're doing later, and perhaps that issue might be re-investigated later. Thanks.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. I'm looking at Superintendent Solmini, because I think we track it now, oh, I think, I know we track it now through PM benchmarks and so on. So I'm not, I don't know, I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but Superintendent Solmini is cleverer than me.
We don't report it to us, in that sometimes the breakdowns aren't in certain, individually, we may be tracking it, but it's not reported back to the trustees in our annual reports of how kids are doing?
So I'm just going to clarify the question, too. So I think what you're asking is that we, in the annual report on student achievement, also report on how students are doing in their language development as a result of the changes to have a comparative piece, is that what you're asking? Okay, yeah, and I think we can do that. Can I also comment on, I know that one of your concerns was the English language development and the parental piece and support for families. One of the things that we talked about in our implementation plan was doing some type of resource for parents, for tips for home, for that English language development, so I thought I would mention that as well.
Thank you. Trustee Grabens.
Thank you, Chair Amos. With regards to the motion that trustee Oliver has put on the table, I'm in support. However, I was wondering if we could quantify some of the language in there, because we have, like, substantial increase. Is that 5%? Is that 7%? Like, I was wondering if there is some way we could add some, like, put up, you know, a solid number of some sort in there.
Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Grabens. How about we eliminate that word completely, and we just report the numbers to you, where we are now and where we're going to be, and then that will be the focus of the conversation, then, I guess?
Wonderful, yes.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My comment was going to be similar, and I started out erroneously earlier about data collection and so on, but I guess my comment is, we have this opportunity now to intentionally collect data, either in terms of benchmarking, we probably are collecting a lot, but just to think about whether these are the measures that are going to serve us best in moving forward, and I think they are, but there may be some additional ones as well. So I guess my question is just to, or it's a comment of encouragement, to consider beyond this, whether there's other measures that will also be helpful to proactive decision-making in the future. Thanks.
Associate Director Vogt.
Absolutely. Trustee L. Harrison, we can take that back and talk about how we are going to monitor, for sure.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Great, thank you. I'm also in support of this motion. Some of my comments, which I was trying to reserve for the sake of time, I think might be relevant now, because while I support the grade two entry, I do think we have to be diligent moving forward, that we keep on top of this. And what I'm thinking is, we know that smaller schools have a tougher time with the viability. We know that schools that have a dual track, that are dual track, have a higher uptake. So what I'm thinking of is, in terms of boundary reviews, we're going to have to be very diligent in deciding where those programs are, because it does have a significant effect on uptake. And I think we have to think very critically about where they go. So I'm not sure how that can be fit into there, but it's going to be something, it's going to be a theme going forward, I'm sure, in the next years, because we will have boundary reviews, just because we will have new schools going forwards. And, yeah, I know, you look like you want to comment. I think the other comment was just that, we know that there's a critical size of school that is needed to be able to support a good dual-track program and a viable program. That will shift now with the grade two entry, but there's still going to be a critical size of school. So all of these things, the calculations that I asked for earlier, I'll continue to ask for, and they're just going to be a little bit different, and I do think we need to think critically about them.
Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Vice Chair Graves. We could certainly provide the data on a school-by-school basis, so trustees could see the challenges that we may, that hopefully we don't, but we may face in schools around the viability of the English program and the French immersion program. So, you know, depending how that plays out, we may be bringing those numbers with a recommendation of some sort. I'm not sure how that looks. I don't know if you need to add the boundary review, or that kind of process, or the diligence to it. I think just the numbers on a school-by-school basis will give trustees and the public the picture. And I'll let Associate Director Vogt comment on your second part.
Thanks, Director Miller. And for sure, size of school is a big piece, and we know that larger, the larger the school, the larger that English cohort that feeds into FI is, so that when you do get some imbalances, you don't get the same kind of issues that we're tackling now, that school size of around 600 or 600, 700 kids. So, you know, I think it is something for us to look at, as we're opening new schools, if we need to readjust, or retweak, or reconfigure. Certainly, it's something for us to look at, to try to ensure that any new schools that may pick up a French immersion track are in a school that has a substantial population that will maintain any kind of imbalances that we might have.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, thank you. Through you to the director. I know that you are already working on an administrative procedure regarding the timing of different reports, and how to create a critical path around those. I'm wondering if this report that we are requesting in this motion might logically fit into that critical path, because there's a staffing component in there, and I believe that if this is an annually requested report, as it is in the motion, that that would mean that it doesn't have to sit on the order paper year after year after year as well.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Collard, hadn't thought of that, but I'm going to look to Executive Officer McFadden to comment, because it's several of us working on that admin procedure. On the face of it, it seems to make sense, but I haven't thought very much about it. Okay, yeah. But certainly, we'll include it in our thoughts, and if it makes sense, as it seems to, we'll include it. If not, we'll get back to the board and say, you know what, it's different, and here's what we're going to do. But we're committed to look at it, then.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. And this might, in part, help to answer some of the questions and thinking by trustee Graves. So the thinking behind my motion was that, in addition to assessing whether we are addressing the two key issues that we're here to resolve or address, that we also do some planning and help to set a structure for the program delivery, that can be looked at from, you know, school-based perspective for the whole region. For those of us who were at the OPSA conference on the weekend, we did hear from the keynote speaker about the importance of setting a structure. And once you have that structure in place, then you can get creative, and then, you know, you can work with it. And so I think it's very important that we understand each school, and that we look at it from the school-specific perspective. We'll understand the school population, the numbers, and that will help us decide whether a program like that should be put into the school, whether it's going to be viable. We can also think of it from the perspective of minimum and maximum numbers in each program, so that both can coexist. And so I think this, we now have enough time to get started and do that kind of a planning exercise, that will also hopefully create more stable and longer-term school boundaries, which I know everybody would love to have. So that is my sincere hope and intent, that we are able to do that, and I'm happy to participate in a subcommittee or work group of that kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I just want to clarify, because we are now removing the words about increase substantially from the actual motion. And basically, we'll be getting the registration numbers, right, for French immersion? We won't be getting anything about increase substantially from years? That will be removed? Is that okay with both the mover and the seconder?
I believe we just were removing the word substantially, because that was the defining word. We wanted to highlight any increases.
So have increased from prior years?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but both of you are in agreement with just removing that one word? Okay. All right. Seeing no further speakers? Previous. Is that the monitoring? Thank you. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I have one further motion, piggybacking on the ones that, regarding the motions that have been passed. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board, direct the director to study adding 10 additional minutes onto the core French program, and bring a recommendation back to the board for the first board meeting in October. And I so moved, seconded by trustee Oliver. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board, direct the director to study adding the 10 additional minutes onto the core French program, and bring a recommendation back to the board for the first board meeting in October. I will email it to you. Okay. So speakers to the motion, trustee Collard.
Yes, I was wondering if we could remove the specificity around 10 minutes, and just ask for a review of the possibility of expanding the core French program? It could very well be that staff would recommend something even more than 10 minutes, or they could come back and say they can't do anything at all. But I don't think we want to limit what they could come back with on that report.
I'm okay with that, just leaving it to additional minutes. Is the seconder, trustee Oliver? Are you okay with that? Vice Chair Graves.
I'm actually not quite there yet. I feel like I've just gotten over a hurdle with the program viability. And I'd actually prefer to table this, to be honest, until September, because I do think it's a different beast. And I would like to see it hit a couple of board packages first, and, yeah, that's where I'm at. I'd also like to give the summer for our staff to be able to bite into some of the larger things that they have going on.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
I just wondered, Chair, if you could review the motion. Was it additional minutes per week? Does it say that, or just additional minutes? Okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos, to all trustees. I'm going to ask Superintendent Solmini, but Superintendent Solmini and I just had a conversation. We think we could have something for October for trustees to look at, so.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I'm in support of asking for more information. I'm not sure if October is the appropriate timeline. I like the idea of asking for a report on improving, enhancing, whatever you want to call it. One of the issues with the 40 minutes is that, you know, how do you timetable it? How do you break it up? I've heard it's two times 20 in some schools, which, you know, is barely enough time to get the kids to sit down. And in other places, I often wondered how they did it in schools with six 50-minute periods? How do you do a 40? So one of the things that I would look for in the fall is, after having had two full years of primary core French, having a report on how it's working, how do they do it? What are they actually teaching? How are they teaching it? And that being part of that report. So I was curious whether or not that was already on the docket for the fall, and whether that could be rolled into it, or whether this was actually an extra piece. I know when we asked for the report last fall, it was, well, they've only had one year, and, you know, nobody's kind of got their head around it yet. Well, now we've gone two full years, we're going into the third, or fourth. Anyway, taking a long time to roll out. So I'm wondering whether that could be part of that larger report.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. We have traditionally brought that report in February or January, around the schools and the comments. I mean, for us, we don't really have an issue, whether it's at that time and it's rolled in with that, or as it's in October, that if it's brought in in February, if the report comes in February, even if it's brought in October, it may be difficult to implement for the following year if we were recommending an increase. But for sure, if we brought it in February, I don't think we could implement it the following year. So I think that we can do either, but there's implications if we do it later, if it's the will of the board to implement it for the following September. I think if we were bringing it in February, I don't think we could. Probably not, anyway.
So I didn't ever like the February date, anyway, because it was not time enough to do any changes. But the one thing about it coming in February of 2017 is... But the one thing about it coming in February of 2017 is it's not after parents have made their decision on whether their children are going into French immersion or not for the fall. So that's the one saving grace of the, if, whatever we do with the minutes thing, the evaluation of the core French so far, coming in February of 2017, is not affecting anyone's decisions for September 2017 because there is no French immersion grade one class that year. But in the past couple of years, having that report coming in February was too late for parents who had to sign up by the end of January. So when we're looking at that report schedule, maybe that one should be a little bit sooner so that parents have the most up-to-date information on how primary core French is working before they make their decisions on French immersion registration.
Director Miller?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. On Monday and Tuesday, the superintendents are, we're getting together for the year-end, and one of the things we're looking at is board report scheduling, so we'll enter that into our thinking.
Thank you. Trustee Cullard.
I didn't remember hearing a date on the motion, so I think it was, was it October? If we just remove the date and leave it at your discretion, you'll fit it in where it's logical, I believe.
That was the director's recommendation, that date, though.
So I would just, I would just suggest removing the date from the motion.
Through Chair Amos to all trustees. We could do it by October, but if you, if, it's better for us if it's at our, because we can put it into the package of our whole board reports and determine it that way. So it would be easier for us to do it that way because we can have a certain cohesion to the way we do reports for the board. So I'm, it's preferable. The reason we said October was because we could do it by then, but be preferable to look at it in the whole gambit of reports. I don't know why I'm waving, speaking with my hands.
Well, could it be brought back to the board at the discretion of the director? I don't know. Pardon?
I would just take the date out. Before February 2016.
Leave it wide open, it could be 2020.
You have my word, it won't be that. How about this as a compromise? We, at the beginning of, sorry, through Chair Amos to trustees, at the beginning of the new school year, we will bring you the board report schedule for that year. We'll have it on there. And we can have it, if, we'll have it on there somewhere where it makes sense, and if trustees want to ask questions about it or think it should be earlier or later, that's fine. Does that make sense?
Then I'll just end it after, back to the board, then. I am gonna email it to you. Are you okay with that, trustee Oliver, as the seconder? Okay. All right. Seeing no further speakers. Did you put something in there, Gail? Oh, sorry. You've put it in there? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So we now can move on to community planning and partnerships. Superintendent Veerman, Superintendent Cullen, Mr. Ranzella, report 16095 on page 80 of your board package. Welcome, Mr. Ranzella. I guess the other two want to leave this to you.
I'm not going to belabor this report. It's the third time trustees have seen it in terms of, first at the community of the whole and then at the previous board meeting. Again, just to reiterate, we are required to move forward with an annual community planning partnership meeting that has been scheduled for next Wednesday at 7:00. There is a list of schools for community partnerships. We have kind of tentatively put it out there. They can be changed at any time. And again, what we're attempting to do as part of this process is to cast our net to see what interested parties are out there to be involved in partnerships. Ultimately, if there's parties that are showing interest in a particular school, we as a board, or you as a board, will have to go through their requests and ultimately decide whether or not they should be partners in light of the criteria established in the board policy. On that note, I'd be glad to answer any other question, though I should point out that we've already received, we are meeting, they won't be able to attend, but with the town of Milton already on some of the new capital projects that they want to meet with us on, so we'll see what happens with respect to the existing schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read the motion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approve the list of schools for community partnerships and that staff be directed to notify community partners of opportunities for sharing of space and undertake the annual community planning and partnerships meeting. Moved by trustee L. Harrison, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Discussion. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm very excited about this first meeting under this policy next week. I was just wondering if you could give us a sense of what that will look like when we arrive? What's planned?
Depending on what happens tonight, I will be having a, I'll send something out to trustees beforehand on terms of the meeting. We'll have an introduction, a PowerPoint, and then just kind of open it up to any interested parties if there are any that are going to be there. So it'll be our first crack at it and see what happens. But we, I think, the program for the evening is more or less a discussion, PowerPoint presentation, and then opening it up for any of the interested participants who may be attending. I should go back as well, and it kind of leads on to our capital priorities report later on, that we've also met with the region on some opportunities as well moving forward. So there's also some, again, additional discussion there.
Great, thank you. And seeing no further speakers. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ranzella. Okay. So we're now up to the summer authority. Director Miller, report 16098 on page 85 of your board package. Where is he going? Oh, okay. You need to change, oh, you need to change your place? When you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Amos. The trustees saw this June 1st, the summer authority about any emergent issues or capital projects that may require some decision to be made. You would be entrusting me to make the decision, and of course, I would be letting all trustees know of that, so it's before you. I'm prepared to take any questions. And I won't, I won't do any crazy stuff signing.
Thank you. I'm gonna put the motion on the table first. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board delegate authority during the summer months of 2016 to the Director of Education with regard to awarding tenders for capital projects or other emergent business matters as required with electronic notification to trustees. And be resolved, the Director of Education report on any capital projects awarded or other decisions made through delegated authority to the board at the end of summer 2016. Moved by trustee Danielli, seconded by trustee Gerbence. Any discussion? Seeing none? What, was there one? Oh, did she? Oh, okay, she snuck in. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, to Director Miller. I wondered if the, if you were at, you know, if in any way you were incapacitated and unable to forward the business of the board, should there be an alternate here? That being the associate director.
Thank you for that rather somber picture of my summer, trustee Gray. Anyway, through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Gray. It's a good question. I'm looking at Superintendent Cullen on how we've dealt with incapacitation at some point, but there will be, I will be on vacation as well, and we will have some superintendents in charge of the board, but they wouldn't have this kind of authority, but they would have contact with me. But I'm looking at Superintendent Cullen, how, it's a good question.
Director Miller, there is a procedure that covers.
Yeah, there is. And we pass it every year and we agree on who they are.
Okay, who is it?
You tell us.
Jerry?
Through the director to the trustees. You're correct. We typically haven't had to have a backup for this particular function because either the director or, he's either been available in person or electronically, which still gives us the same authority to proceed. There is a designated superintendent in his place for any time that he's not physically available, but we would typically not rely on that daily activity to be the person who would then authorize, I'll say, a significant capital project of sorts, but they would then in turn refer it to the director and he would get back to us and advise us that we're clear to go ahead. As far as the other issues related to the daily business, there is a backup plan for the director should he disappear unexpectedly.
There you go. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for adding in the electronic notification into the actual motion. I did notice that you adjusted that. And I'm pretty much convinced that electronic business can be done no matter where you choose to take your vacation. There are very few dead spots left in the world, so thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Director Miller. Okay, so we're on to our next topic, the multi-year plan. Director Miller and myself, report 16102 revised on page 86 of your board package. Director Miller, would you like to speak to this?
Just a couple of com, a couple of comments. Thank you, Chair Amos. I want to reiterate, I would like to reiterate what I had said last week, or two weeks ago, about the significance of the multi-year plan, the strategic plan, in determining the direction of the board for four years and subsequently the success of our students. This is a significant undertaking by a board, and the board of trustees, I thank you for your support and your ideas and your direction around developing this multi-year plan. And you have our assurance that we will be developing a communication plan and an implementation plan around, for our entire staff. Just so I, prior to teachers going home for, or teachers having their summer vacation, I, we will be, if this is approved this evening, we will be sending this out as a beginning point, and we will be talking about the strategic plan at the leadership conference. Just because I want to, and I like to, and I have the microphone, I would like to read our mission again because I think it is a pretty significant mission. Together, we inspire every student to learn, grow, and succeed. Our vision, every student will explore and enhance their potential passions and strengths to thrive as contributing global citizens. And I think those are missions, that's a mission and vision that we can all be proud of at the table. And our communities in which our kids live and you represent will be pleased with what this is. Now, why we, one of the things that we had to make a decision on was the goals. Last, on June 1st, when I presented it, we had a matrix, and many trustees sent in some wording, possibility, changes and stuff. And we took a look at those. You entrusted admin council to take a look at those, so we've created two versions. Version one is the original, version two is the revised one with the wording changes. And how do I get this thing back? I did something. Do we have anybody in IT here? I hit the wrong one?
Yes.
Ah, no wonder. All right, so this is... This is the original one that I presented last week, or two weeks ago. I, oh, wait. Where is it?
Don't touch it.
Planning on doing computer lessons this summer?
Oh, there it is. I, this isn't my machine, it's like your car. You're used to driving your own car. Anyway, this was the original that I presented last, on June 1st. I particularly liked the setup, and I think the trustees liked this setup as well. And then this was the changed one with the changes underlined. And trustees had suggested, or we had suggested that we bring this back and trustees vote for which one they prefer to go with the multi-year plan. So I'll leave it at that and leave it open for questions now.
So before we can actually vote on the motion, we have to decide which version of the goals we as a group approve. So the underlining is the only difference. So vice, or sorry, trustee Cullard.
Thank you. I would like to voice my support for version two, and I guess that's what we're gonna do is voice our preference and then decide which one to vote on.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I too would like to voice my support for version two. I like to see the all-staff will use data in the middle of the matrix there. And I hope we can expand that to be data and best practices in implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
I also prefer the second one. I think it's a nice improvement over the first.
Thank you. Trustee Gerbence.
I'm all for the second version.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy with version two and support that. I'm happy to see that some of the recommendations I had made were incorporated. One I still am not clear about is what, what do we mean when we say, in the students under equity and well-being portion of the table, at the end sentence, and we, and will see themselves reflected in their learning?
I'm gonna thank you, through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Oliver. Thank you for that question. I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Etoff.
Yes, through the chair to trustee Oliver. See themselves reflected in the learning is a critical element that's being reflected in lots of ministry documents and initiatives at the moment. We've actually captured some of the language right out of those documents and integrated it into the multi-year plan goal, which we're speaking to at the moment. See themselves reflected in the learning has to do with, you know, ensuring that the, that we are providing materials and curriculum that is connected directly to authentic learning experiences for kids that are accurate. So later in the board meeting, we're gonna be hearing from, an update on our truth and reconciliation initiatives. One of those initiatives is to ensure that we're providing an accurate reflection, not just from an ethno, or sorry, from a European perspective of residential schooling in Canada, but one from the indigenous perspectives. And so that's, that's really... And so that's really, you know, I guess part and parcel of what that particular goal is speaking to. But in general, all kids, you know, understanding and seeing that, you know, that they're provided with learning opportunities where they can go beyond what maybe some of the traditional topics and content may have been in our classrooms. Ancient civilizations, always studying the Aztecs, or always studying, you know, going beyond that and seeing that there is lots of ancient history over the course of, over the course of the world and many of which would be directly connected to their cultural backgrounds.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
I support number two.
Thank you. Trustee Papen.
I also support number two.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Ditto Roger that, I'm also on board for number two. And I also support Trustee Harvey Hope's comments with respect to the middle cell there to add in best practices along with data.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
I'm on the bus with everyone else in supporting number two.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Ditto that, I too like to.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider.
Jovan and I support number two.
Wonderful. And I'll make it unanimous, so I guess number two is the version that we're going with. So, I'm going to now read the motion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the mission, vision, and values as well as goals outlined, is it goals? We need to say goals in Appendix A, as outlined in the 2016-17 multi-year plan, Report 16102. Moved by, Trustee Cullard, seconded by Trustee Oliver. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Cullard.
I believe that should be 2016 to 2020, not 2016 to 2017. That wouldn't be a multi-year plan.
Good catch.
Good observation, Trustee Cullard.
So, it'd be the 2016-2020 multi-year plan. Okay, version two. Any other discussion? No? And that passes unanimously. And I'd like to congratulate every one of us around the table and the people who helped us consult and from the community, some of them are here in the boardroom. This plan, I believe, is placing us forward for the future and we, something we should be very proud of because it's going to leave a legacy at this board of doing great things for students. And, not that we already do, but I think it's going to move us that step forward for the future. So thank you very much for everybody here and for those who aren't here for all the hard work that went into preparing this. So, the next item is, I think they've been waiting a long time for their last board meeting, our student trustee reports.
Thank you. Jovan and I have prepared a little something for last board meeting. We'll try to make it quick because we know we've been here for a long time. So, Madam Chair, Mr. Director, Trustees, Staff, ladies and gentlemen, reality has set in that the school year is quickly coming to a close. Next week we start exams and commencement. We have reached the end of a long road, only to shift directions and embark on a new adventure next fall. For Jovan and I, this is our last board meeting and it's bittersweet. We have had the honor of working alongside so many incredible people for the last two years.
To begin, Sophie and I want to extend our deepest gratitude to Board Chair Kelly Amos, Board Vice Chair Kim Graves, and all the trustees and superintendents for their patience, mentorship, accountability, encouragement over the past two years. Whether it was discussing new initiatives, briefing us about the latest board decisions, or chatting about activities going on in their schools, you always made us feel welcome and included. We are extremely grateful for the time they took out of their busy schedules and to seek the student opinion by speaking with Sophie and I and listening to our ideas. Their dedication to improving public education for over 60,000 students is inspiring. The Halton District School Board is lucky to have such a dedicated team of professionals. And admittedly, we were a bundle of nerves at the beginning of our term two years ago. Thankfully for us, we had champions of public education. Past Director Yowali and current Director Miller were there to help make us feel comfortable and confident in our roles. Despite their full place, they always made time for us. And Director Miller was integral in getting our initiatives off the ground and we cannot thank him enough for our successes this year. The learning environment in the Halton District School Board is second to none thanks to his poise, passion, and servant leadership.
We would also like to thank Superintendent Hunt Givens and Trustee Mentor Daniele. They were always there for us for helpful advice, answers, and never-ending guidance and support. Anytime we needed help for anything, they were always there and we are so thankful. In addition, a special heartfelt thank you must be extended to Gil Gortmaker and Susan Milson, who have always been there to help with our administration. Without their help at critical times, we would be lost. We would also like to thank the staff from the Information Technology Services, Program Services, Equity and Inclusion Department, and the Mental Health Team for their help and all the wonderful opportunities they have provided for us and our student senators to be engaged. Thank you for ensuring that student voice is heard and that it matters.
It has been quite a year for learning, actually two years. We saw students pull together and voice themselves in a time of uncertainty. We saw students rise to the occasion and actively create extracurricular opportunities. But most importantly, we saw the holistic student experience come back better than ever. From inside the classroom to sports and events outside, of course, with the exception of homework, we are grateful for a wonderful fulfilling year. This year was full of challenges but successes too. We were able to organize many great guest speakers to our senate meetings and put on a very successful, I don't think it's, I think it's like 15th or 16th annual, 15th Annual Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. This annual leadership symposium, conference was attended by over 300 students this year, focused on transitions, and once again was a huge success. And as you guys, as everyone here knows, a few weeks ago, the new student trustees were elected, Zaid Hajali and Dashra Metropolantowski, and they're both eager to begin their new roles.
The Ontario Student Trustees Association experienced tremendous growth at the provincial level over the past two years. We met with the Premier and the Minister of Education to share the provincial student voice and done so many initiatives that have had such a widespread impact. In addition, the Mental Health Symposium held in February, enabling student leaders, mental health experts, and the government to work together in partnership and launch NOSTA ECO Mental Health Initiative. Jovan and I made our dear friends through this organization. It has been my honor to serve on their executive for the past two years, going to consultations for various stakeholders and running conferences. I've always raved to our General Assembly about how accepting Halton is of student voice, being one of the only senates in Ontario with elementary students. Incoming student trustee Dashra was elected as Public Board President at our last annual general meeting, and Jovan and I look forward to hearing about the further strides the organization will undoubtedly be making next year.
During the course of this year, our work and role expanded within the Halton District School Board. Sophie and I accomplished a significant amount of work participating on the Mental Health Steering Committee, Halton Learning Foundation Program Viability Committee, Student Voice Reports, and along with several other board initiatives. We also had the pleasure of emceeing the Give Respect, Get Respect Conference and seeing firsthand the breadth, value, and depth of student initiatives to prevent bullying. Student voices in the Halton District School Board stand strong. Over the last two years, the Student Senate was a welcoming place where students from across the board were willing to ask the tough questions and provide their important input. Today, the opportunities to hear student voice are more inclusive due to the use of technology. We heard our students tell us that teachers are also regularly asking for student input during assessments and evaluations. Today, students are taking part in shaping their own education more than ever. As soon as we were elected, we knew that our term would be memorable and meaningful, but we did not expect it to be life-changing. Reflecting back on the last two years, I realized that what I have learned and experienced has influenced my thinking and understanding of the importance of education to meet the needs of each student, opportunities for all students to excel, and equity of access for all students. And that has been a life-changing experience for me. I joined the Student Senate way back in grade seven, and every year it has reaffirmed my belief and passion for advocating for student voice. During that time and still now, I realize the importance of student voice and how schools are actually made for students. If you aren't making school a place where a student wants to come back every single day, then something is wrong. That was something I learned from Student Senate and something I carried into my role as student trustee. A good leader is one that helps build the leadership potential and capacity in others around them. My goal as student trustee has always been to support my fellow peers and ignite the fiery leadership potential within themselves and motivate students to advocate for what they believe in.
I stepped into this boardroom as a senator for the first time as a meek, scared grade nine, and almost four years ago. This very room has transformed me into a person who is able to not only stand up for myself, but to advocate for those who aren't as fortunate to sit in this chair I am sitting in today. Our speaker at our student leadership conference talked about the fire that you have to ignite in those around you as a leader. And the most rewarding part of this position was when people came up to me saying how I hadn't impacted them. From a student trustee at the Student Trustees Association saying they implemented elementary students in their student senate because of what I said. Or student centers telling me that they've inspired me to make a difference. Even adults at consultations saying that I've brought a new perspective to them about student voice. I don't know if I'll ever make an impact like this again, but I have been privileged to leave a mark on lives because of the opportunities that the Halton District School Board has given me, and for that I am truly thankful. This board has given Jovan and I, this board has taken Jovan and I and fostered us into students ready to take on the world, to fight injustices, and to keep on making impact. The people around us at this table, the people that have come before you, and the board as a whole has, inspires us every day to take care, passion, empathy, and drive to whatever we do.
We know that future student trustees Zaid and Dashra will have a similarly memorable year ahead of them. They have proven themselves to be extremely capable individuals with strong leadership skills. Sophie and I have full faith in our newly-elected student trustees and will continue to act as mentors for them through the coming year. As they take over and we are confident that this dynamic duo will take the Halton District School Board to new heights.
Wherever our Jovan and I end up, we hope to take these lessons and put them into practice by serving others in our communities. As we leave high school and our student trustee terms behind, we again would like to thank the board and its members for the opportunity to serve the students of Halton. Please continue to seek out student voice in all the important decisions you make as you strive to meet new challenges and for challenging the face of Halton. Your work impacts the success of our next generation. We wish you all the best in your endeavors and much success in your future projects, and thank you wholeheartedly for this unforgettable journey.
I'm going to let Trustee Daniele speak first.
Thank you. As always, the hardest part of the evening comes when I have to follow my two amazing colleagues. And you have been colleagues at our table. You've been instrumental in almost everything that we've done. You've never hesitated to speak up and speak for the students within our system. Your involvement in strategy sessions and more, watching how you've engaged the Student Senate, bringing on newer and younger student senators and engaging them at that younger age that they'll build into the same kind of role you've had, watching you do your position papers. I know I speak for myself, Superintendent Hunt Givens, and Trustee Mentor Alternate Papen, when I say that probably some of my favorite times were attending the Student Senate meetings because there was such a vibrancy, such an engagement, and such a passion there. And you fostered that, and you made that happen within those rooms. You often put us to shame with the energy and initiative that you were showing in the work that you were doing. I have no doubts whatsoever that you will continue to have impact on the world as you leave us and go on to the next role. You will continue to make change, you will continue to move mountains, and you will continue to make this board a better place. And I do have something for you. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we have just a little something for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did it without tears.
Director Miller?
I'll be brief because I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Hunt Givens. I almost was crying there Sophie, Jovan. It almost worked. Can we have autographed pictures now because we know you're going to be famous somewhere, sometime, doing something, so then we can hawk them on eBay or whatever, but... Jovan, Sophie, you guys have been fantastic. You've been fantastic, not just for your leadership around the students, but your integration into, with the adults in the room as well. People that have lots of, shall we say, experience as opposed to age, but you have been instrumental in helping us see the perspective of youth and how our kids in the schools feel. And it's invaluable what you've taught us. And we, senior admin, wish you all the best in the future, and we know that you're going to have a great future. Jovan, start supporting somebody other than Manchester United, and you'll have even more luck. But, thank you, you guys, and all the best, and I'm going to have Julie have a few words.
I would just like to echo what everyone else has said, but I would like to add an extra component because I'm not sure if people are aware, but our student trustees and the Student Senate that they work with have been instrumental in providing feedback to our secondary program department as well, representing all of our teachers. And we have worked closely with this group. We have perhaps maybe used and abused them for their wonderful ideas and their input from everything, from the revamping of growing success and the importance of student voice and all of that, to ideas in classroom strategies, to assessment and evaluation, and the staff have been in working with all of them. These two have made it happen. They haven't done it because I asked. They did it because they saw incredible value and they saw it as opportunity. So on behalf of all of the students you represent, I thank you for them as well as for us. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to thank you. I remember when you started, you were actually both very quiet. You weren't sure about whether even if you should vote or not, right? Do you remember that? That was a long time ago. But, you've grown and you should be so proud of yourselves because I know I'm very proud of you and I'm sure every one of us around the table is, because you've grown into wonderful young adults. And you have such exciting times ahead of you, we know that. And just like Director Miller said, that we need your autographs because we know that you're going to be out there doing exciting things that we all wish that we could do. But, thank you for representing the students of Halton so well. And thank you for bringing student voice to the table because you have influenced every one of us as well. It's not just about representing the students. You have influenced us and all we can do is wish you well, and thank you so much for all that you have done. And I'd just like to say, make sure you take your name place when you leave, in case you're leaving early, because they're yours. And, so, we'll miss you, but please come back and visit. So, seeing no further speakers, thank you so much for your last student trustee report. And maybe could you share that with us? That'd be awesome. Okay, before we move on to notices of motion, Director Miller, I'd like to read something from someone who was heavily involved in our multi-year plan that's not here.
For those of you that thought I was a bit of a technical Luddite at the computer, I have a text here. David Yowali's watching, so if you want to smile at him. But David, our former director, has asked me to pass this message on tonight around the multi-year plan. He's sorry he could not be here tonight, but he had to attend a retirement ceremony, and he says, "Congratulations on the multi-year plan. It was not only a pleasure to work with the team on this, but also an excellent learning experience. Indeed, we learned, grew, and succeeded together."
Thank you so much, David. Nice words. Okay, so the next item is notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion for our September meeting? Seeing none, we'll now move up to our action items for September the 7th. A bio break? Sure, just make sure you come back because it is 5:10 and we would like to see if we could... Well, okay, so I'm, we'll have a motion to, can I have a motion to extend? We'll have a motion to, can I have a motion to extend? Trustee Grabent, seconded by Trustee Collard.
I would like to put a time limit on the extension. I'm prepared to stay up until 11:00 and no later.
Well, we'll have another motion at 11:00.
You're gonna be done. You're gonna be done.
So, just a sec, I have to find it.
I haven't added it.
Okay. Trustee Collard.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna be done.
Should be there.
Yep. All those in favor?
Yeah, you know what? That's right.
That passes unanimously. So please make this quick. You have five minutes. Well, I just tapped, so... Okay, so we're on to our first action item for September the 7th. Capital Priority, Superintendent Veerman and Mr. Ranzella, Report 16105. Welcome. And when you're ready.
Thank you. Through the Chair, we have received notification from the Ministry that they will be accepting capital priorities. There is a timeline. They require the information by July the 15th. So as a result, we allow the Trustees to waive the rules. Mr. Ranzella will provide additional information with respect to the projects that are going to be submitted to the Ministry for your approval.
Go ahead, Mr. Ranzella.
Thank you. As outlined in the report, we received notification from the Ministry on May 26 for capital priorities. So our apologies for trying not getting this sooner so you've had more discussion. But there's a couple of factors that played into that. One being we needed to go through the projects through Admin Council. But most importantly, with this year's capital priorities, we are also required to identify capital projects as part of a joint submission with the region of Halton and in terms of their childcare standards and child and family support programs. We just met with them last Thursday, so it is a little bit of a rush. But hopefully we, and that's why we need to get the decision tonight and we weren't able to get it to you earlier. As outlined, the capital priorities that the Ministry is looking at has to do with at least four items. Enrollment pressures, that applies to our board in North Oakville and Milton. School consolidations, which we don't have at this point in time. The facility condition, which we do have some schools that fall within that. And French language accommodation, which does not apply to our board. It doesn't refer to French immersion accommodation. It's related to French language schools. Again, looking at last year's projects, we submitted for seven. We only received the top two, which is Craig Hillberger Edition and Elton Village. And in terms of our capital project initiatives moving forward, we have the Milton Southwest Number 10, Northeast Oakville Number 2, and the Milton Southwest Number 1 High School because they all fall within the timelines as requested by the Ministry. As well, we've added in terms of the school condition projects, two schools. One is a carryover from last year, Brookfield Public School, and we've added Robert Little Public School. Is there any guarantee that we're going to get funding for those rebuilds? And again, it depends on the Ministry. They didn't see it as much of a priority last year, so we didn't get any funding. But again, just for clarification, we use the FCI, the Facility Condition Index, which the Ministry uses to assess these projects. And again, the question comes up in terms of whether or not it's like an old car. Do you continue to fix the old car, put more money into it? Or is it cheaper to buy a new car and ensure that it maintains, that, you know, it's cheaper to maintain in the shorter and longer term? So we've added Robert Little to Brookfield. So the top, the five priority projects that we've listed in the report is number one, Milton Southwest Number 10. The number two priority is Oakville Northeast Number 2 Public School. Number three is Milton Southwest Number 1 High School. And then we have Brookfield Public School as priority four and Robert Little Public School as number five. As well, again, the most important thing is that we also had to wait to deal with the region on the childcare centers and the child and family support programs. We met with them on Thursday, as I mentioned. And as part of that priority list, we looked at, and then the overall priorities that we worked with in terms of the region and our Co-Terminus Board is, the region's number one priority is a childcare and Ontario Early Year Center at the New Milton Southwest Number 10 High Elementary School. They're also looking at placing an OEYC at Oakwood Public School. Then we have Oakville Northeast Number 2 as the third priority. And that's a childcare and Ontario Early Year Center as well. And then number seven is Robert Little. And what they saw there was an early year center in conjunction with any potential rebuild of Robert Little Public School. I've gone through it relatively quickly, but I think, you know, I'd be glad to answer any of the questions. I should point out that there is not a lot of money with respect to the childcare centers and child and family support programs. The Ministry only has about $20 million this year. But they believe that this is going to be an ongoing initiative moving forward. I don't know if Superintendent Padra Berwick wants to add to that because he's been involved with that work. But, and in terms of the capital priorities, the Ministry is looking maybe around $450 million provincially for funding those capital projects. So anyways, I'd be glad to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe we've heard the need to waive the rules for this tonight. So do any of the speakers want to speak to waiving the rules or do they want to speak to the actual motion? Well, no, I was gonna put the waiving, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to waive the rules. Trustee Harvey Hope, seconded by Trustee Gray. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? So the people that are on the list, do you want to discuss waiving the rules? No? Okay. So... All those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with this tonight? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So I will read the motion and then we'll have discussion. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the projects as identified in Report 16105 to be submitted to the Ministry of Education as part of the request for capital priorities. Moved by, Trustee Daniele, seconded by Vice Chair Graves. Discussion. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I noted that Montclair was on last year's list and it has fallen off from this year's list. And I was wondering why it was replaced by Robert Little?
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Collard. We discussed this at Admin Council and I asked that it be taken off. Not because I've got anything against Montclair, but Montclair just had a recent renovation about three or four years ago. And we believe that there's a couple of issues, the fact that it would remain on, sorry? I'll turn to you in a sec, Chair. And I'll turn to Superintendent Cullen. We were concerned first about, well, not first, they're not in priority, the optics of putting it on a capital priority list when it's just recently had a renovation. And two, we're not sure it's necessary at this point. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cullen to elaborate.
Through the Chair, just to clarify, there was actually the addition for the implementation of the full-day kindergarten. That renovation was part of it and then was a further addition for capacity. So it was technically two different capital projects done about a year, year and a half apart. And one of them actually impacted parts of the existing school as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Yes, I'm pleased to see both a public school and a high school for Milton on this list. Both much needed in the community. I also like the size of the list, that it's focusing on a small number of priorities. Because as we know, what the Ministry comes back with often is a small number of projects. So yeah, I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Trustee Ella Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering whether you could speak to what the OEYC would look like? What could that look like?
Through the Chair, I can jump in and answer that one. Right now, they're Ontario Earlier Centers. And so they're scattered around Halton. The idea is to shift these into schools because that's really a good fit to offer services. Their focus is more prenatal to preschool ages. So drop-in programs, early language development, they offer all of that type of service for kids before they come to us. So it is a nice fit. And we see it. It's an exciting partnership. We've been waiting for the Ministry to announce this kind of funding for a long, long time. So we're really happy to put in an application and our fingers are crossed that we actually get some approvals.
Thank you. So I want to say thank you very much for including Oakwood on this list. I think that's great. And I just wondered, given that you said the resourcing for this program is fairly small, what the anticipated cost is generally per site?
We don't know at this point in time. We have to fill out the template with respect to that. So I, at this point in time, I know there is a formula, but I don't know it offhand.
We also get, we get a lot of guidance from our region, like the region of Halton, on what a setup, what a room, what a facility would look like. So they'll guide some of that in concert with the Ministry as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And lastly, I was wondering whether the administrators of these schools would be in the loop on this particular item?
Probably not in the sense that this has just been made public as a result of this report. I think, you know, we could advise them that this is moving forward. And they've been identified as potential sites. And just to be aware that there may be some, there'll be further notice because we won't anticipate any funding announcements until such time, until probably in the fall, October. So just to make them aware of it.
I have contacted the Principals as well and chatted a bit just to make them aware of the submission. And they're very supportive of it. Most of our Principals would see this as a huge community outreach piece, so Vince is very supportive.
Thank you. Is there any further questions on this topic tonight? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so our next item is the Code of Ethics. Director Miller, Report 16110 on page 112 of your board package. Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to all Trustees. I think this has been before you. Before, I'm gonna look to Executive Officer McFadden. And I think we're also asking to waive the rules this evening. Or no, is it just for information? Or decision? Were we gonna ask to waive the rules?
I believe that this is the second time it's been here. It has been posted for public input.
Oh, so it's a second?
Yeah. No public input was received, so it's here for final approval.
Okay, then I brought it wrong.
So then it should have been moved up even further, but no?
It had, this is the first time since the public input. So it needs, and since it's a policy, I would recommend against waiving the rules.
Okay.
Unless there's a need.
Unless there's a need.
No. We're fine. I kind of misspoke. I get it, so... Anyway, any comments now, Executive Officer McFadden or I can answer.
Is there any comments or questions around the Code of Ethics policy? Seeing none, then it will come back on September the 7th. So now we're up to our information items. The first item is our Truth and Reconciliation Report. Superintendent Etoff, Report 16106 on page 93 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Etoff. When you're ready.
Don't need those knees anymore. Okay. Ouch. I wish to start my presentation this evening, just with a footnote, that there's two really important people who aren't here with me this evening. And looking ahead at the agenda, we decided to do a much abbreviated report, not knowing that we might even get to this report this evening. So I would like to acknowledge two integral members of my team involved with this work. First of all, Tammy Hardwick is our Instructional Program Leader for FMMI. And of course, Mary Jane Farish, the Principal for Equity and Inclusive Education. The purpose of tonight's report is to provide you with an update on our work towards those three goals that are in the report and were part of the motion that was brought forward to the Board last spring. First being that our commitment to all HGSB students, that they graduate with knowledge of residential schools and their effects on Aboriginal communities in Canada, to acknowledge the history of our area and the traditional territories in which our schools and communities reside. And furthermore, to work with the Ministry of Education, OWSPA, and the Aboriginal communities to ensure that the history and legacy of residential schools and the impact of the Indian Act appears in curriculum in a way that gives voice to first peoples. For many years, the Halton District School Board has been recognized as a provincial leader in this work. This has been able to be accomplished in part, certainly due to the support of the Board of Trustees. So we certainly thank you for that and acknowledge that support because we wouldn't be able to do the work without it. As you can see in the report, dedicated staff have worked hand in hand with elders and local knowledge keepers and ministry staff to implement numerous staff, student, and system-level initiatives. I think the only thing that I don't like about the report is that it appears to be a bit of a laundry list. And as a result, I don't think it really gets to the heart and the power of the work that has been accomplished. So I would like to share with you briefly one particular experience which is outlined on page 2 of the report. It's bullet number eight and it references Joshua Creek Public Schools' production of Peter Pan. And I wanted to read you some comments from the Principal Janet Richard Delly as she shared these with her school community just prior to the production being shown. She says, "Near the end of last year, the staff involved in our musical met to discuss and debate which production would be chosen for this year. During the selection process, the school did not yet have access to the actual script, but based on the fact that we had never done the show before, Peter Pan seemed like the perfect option. When the script arrived and the students began to rehearse, it quickly became apparent that there were a number of disturbing elements in what we had purchased and planned to present. At that point, we had a difficult decision to make. Should we simply go back to the drawing board and choose a different play? Could we somehow continue on and hope that people wouldn't notice? In the end, we knew exactly what we had to do. We needed to fix what was wrong and teach others about it in the process. Our dedicated musical stacked worth closely with Instructional Program Lead Tammy Hardwick and her team from the Board to examine the script and make the necessary adjustments and omissions. The students in the production also had the opportunity to learn with Tammy. They took part in a very powerful community circle where students shared their questions and concerns and deepened their understandings of the First Nations people. This learning has extended beyond our Peter Pan production and our grade-five teachers have now begun on a collaborative inquiry with staff from other schools and across the board. Their students are embarking on a unit of study on residential school system and the impact that this horrible piece of Canadian history has had and continues to have on First Nations people." This brings us to tonight, which further explains why we have chosen to support the Woodland Cultural Center in Branford. In our fundraising efforts, people were asked to make donations that evening, of which they accumulated $2,000. That was certainly sent on to the Woodland Cultural Center and future connections and opportunities and... sent on to the Woodland Cultural Center and future connections and opportunities and visits are planned for the staff and for a select group of students. So I wanted to share that with you, because that's a reflection of the true power of authentic learning and what can happen when you have the expertise, when you have the resources, and when you have the openness that's been created in our Board. And we're certainly very appreciative of that. It's much more than a laundry list of to-dos. It's creating authentic learning experiences and really driving home for the students the impact and the work that needs to be done in this area. So if there's any further ado, I will pass it on to any trustees that may have questions.
Thank you very much. And you do have a couple of comments or questions. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My deepest thanks to yourself, Tammy, and Mary Jane for this work. A year ago, seems like, not that long ago, but wow, what a list of things that are just the tip of the iceberg and represent a whole lot of learning that's taken place. And you actually answered my question. I was going to say, it would be great in next year's report to hear about the impact of the learning, to hear how it's been animated and reflected through the participants' eyes. I feel, to have truly transformative learning, we need to have some disorienting dilemmas and some difficult conversations. And it's great that these opportunities are taking place in a safe and caring place, and that truly, I think, that we are advancing truth and reconciliation. And I look forward to being part of that as we move on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair. I would echo exactly what Trustee L. Harrison has had to say. When I looked at this report, I thought of the saying, you need to go slow to go fast. And this seems like accelerated slow to me. And so kudos to everybody, Tammy, Mary Jane, yourself, for the leadership that you've provided to all of our schools, so that they can begin to delve into the issues that belong with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I look forward to next year and seeing, and I don't mind the laundry list, because it gives me an idea of the breadth and depth, and it makes me want to connect and reach out to some of those schools that have done some wonderful work and to learn more about what has been the impact of their work. So I thank you very much for this report.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I echo for the third time, I guess. Thank you for the report. I also don't mind the laundry list. It's interesting to see how the different schools do different things in different ways. But I just also wanted to remind the community and my fellow trustees that we did our part. Those of us that were able to go to Branford for an O B S P A meeting did do a tour of the Woodland Cultural Center. And I know everybody was profoundly affected by that visit. For me, it was my second time going, and just as powerful the second time. And so, and then we, a lot of us were at the Udenawi official grand opening and experienced how it's, how that school's theme and how they're interpreting it as well. So just thought I'd add that to the section, because it's not part of your report, but it's definitely from our level, it's adding to our learning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I was, I'm truly awed by this inspiring work. Really, Justice Sinclair had requested that everybody just do one thing, and this blows that away. So thank you for helping us already accomplish what we've been asked to do.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
I have no words to say thank you. The depth of the gratitude that I have for the work that's being done and the dedication of your staff to this work, and in constantly looking for new and different ways to embed this into what we do every single day, never ceases to amaze me. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you to you and to them for everything that you've done.
And we have lots of exciting things in store for next year, one of which is today we sent off an application for a grant for Canada 150. And that's focused on truth and reconciliation. And so we're hoping it gets accepted. Either way, there will be work that will be done. But that's a federal-level grant that would certainly assist us in broadening this work. So we'll be keenly awaiting in the fall to hear some good news back, hopefully, on that front.
I too'd like to add my thanks for all the work that has been put into this. And I mean, we've come a long way in a year. And I hope somehow that we are sharing this information with the rest of the system, and it's not just here in this boardroom, because we need to let our communities know the work that's actually happening. So somehow, I don't know if it's through a media release, or if it's a somehow a general sharing, but we need to be letting people know, especially the Ministry of Education and some of our outside communities, that, you know, we're doing these great things in Halton, and we are, we are trying to work in response to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So thank you to you and your team for all the great work that is being done. No further questions? Thank you very much. Superintendent Etoff, the next item is the Capitol Update. Superintendent Cullen, report 16107 on page 97 of your board package.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is strictly for information. As you know, it is the update of the Capitol Projects. I would have to say the highlights at this point in time are probably that the Alton addition, Alton Village Public School addition is going very well, timing-wise. They've actually got it roofed in and watertight, so it's really moving along. Martin Street, as you know, you've approved the award to the general contractor. We're beginning there shortly. One that's not on the list that is probably of interest is the Percy Mary outcome. So the demolition and cleanup of the remaining ash, as we call it, is taking place. And we've now also listed on the list all the portable locations that we're aware of through planning, and we'll start updating those as we move forward through the rest of the cycle. So, and this is one of the dates in the cycle where we bring back the financial report as well. We'll be doing that, of course, again in the fall with much more detail. So I'll be happy to take any questions related to that particular update. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions around the Capitol update tonight? Trustee or Vance?
Through you, Chair Amos. I just, I'm so thankful that the Alton Village addition is going well. I've only heard positive things, and that is great, because that community sometimes is very vocal when they're not happy. So it's been very quiet, and I take that very positively. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I'd like to thank you very much for your report tonight, Superintendent Cullen. All right, so we're now up to the Ombudsman Administrative Proceed, no?
Special Education.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Special Education Review. Director Miller, report 16109 on page 110 of the board package.
Thank you, Chair Amos. This report's for information, and it's a follow-up to our verbal commitment that we've made more than once, that we agree with C I A C and the Board of Trustees, that we need to do some form of review. There are some details lacking around how much this will cost and where the money will come from. But we will, if Superintendent Beerman and I have talked, and so she's prepared to answer a question around that. But this is, the scope of the review also, it's down here in three areas of focus that have been developed by the Student Services. There's a little malleability in this report, because we won't know exactly until we speak with the person who's doing the review, what they're, they would help us a little bit with the scope. But we thought it was important that it get in the public domain out there that we're going to conduct this review. And we will be meeting this week to develop an R F Q around that. So if there's any questions, they can be directed to me, Superintendent Beerman, or Superintendent Zoniffeld. Thanks.
Thank you. So I do believe we have a couple of questions or comments on your report tonight. So Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you very much. This is a more fulsome report than I expected for just saying which areas are going to do so. I appreciate that. So that there's, certain areas have been selected for review, and I was wondering whether in some further in the fall, the areas you'd still like to look at but weren't selected could be shared at some point. Again, I'm looking at it from a point of view of interaction with the Audit Committee and the Regional Internal Audit, and making sure that we use the best resources. And the program department people may be better for the external, and maybe the use of funds or something might be better for something else. So, and wondered whether or not we would see the recommendations before changes were made. Again, one of those, share with us at some point, just to say this is sort of where we're coming from. But then also saying, because I think the recommendations may have implementations, or they may have timelines, or they may have dollars that are needed. So, thank you.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Yeah, I knew exactly where you're going with the audit, and that's our intention. The External Auditor has already actually had a conversation with Superintendent Zoniffeld, not in great detail, but that's very good advice, and that we had planned on looking at that. And I suspect the best way to do your second part would be bring a report to the Board around the results of the review before any recommendations even come, recommendations would roll out from that. Mark, do you want to add anything?
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I was wondering whether the review would also take into stakeholders like parents, whether there could be a parent voice component to this. So that was my one question. I also just noticed, reading it now, the areas for the review identify spec ed programs and placements, and then it says the timeframe is spec ed programs and services. I'm just wondering if you could just clarify, clarify that, please? Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, so the, for the areas, the programs and placements, that's referring specifically to our smaller class placement options, such as, some of those are placements that come through I P R C. Others are programs that don't follow that route. So that's an area for, of, that we're suggesting within the scope. Under the timeframe, that's referring to the entire review, right? Special Education Programs and Services review. That's why the difference in language there.
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Reynolds. With respect to your first question around parents, as I said at the beginning, there's a bit of malleability with this. There's not a lot of people out there that would do that, that would conduct this kind of review. So part of it, we will be having conversations, we obviously do an R F Q, but part of it will be some conversations around what they're able to do, what they would suggest, and so on. So, and we're prepared to hear that. So the answer is not a yes or a no, but it's certain something that would be under consideration and under advisement, depending on who we get doing it. So.
I have a minute.
It's a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it was clarity. The element of the assessment practices required for student support and formal identification, is that ministry-directed? Sorry, doesn't the ministry direct how we do our assessment practices? Or is this, would this be in consultation with the ministry?
Through the chair. So our assessment practices are, those are, the practices themselves are dictated by the colleges that govern those professionals that do that work. So that the, you know, the practices, the caliber of those is dictated there. Then the, sort of the intensity or the level of assessment that's done by staff is not dictated by the ministry. So we know for a fact that our assessments look different than some other boards do. Some boards have more of a higher-level screen that goes on for some purposes. Others have more in-depth, and we know that there's variation across the province. So we know that this is an area that would be wise for us to look at in this review.
This special ed review, I'm looking at Superintendent Zoniffeld. That was what we were anticipating, anyway. I'm not sure if the E A one will be wrapped up into it, but Mark, do you have any?
Once again, it'll depend on that scope discussion that we have, you know, once we hire the individual or firm that's doing this work. So it'll depend a bit on those conversations and the experience that that person brings to that. We've done quite a bit of the work on the E A allocation review already. So, you know, we're sort of preparing, you know, almost ready to do a draft report on that. So I'm not sure if that would be needed, necessary there. The other reviews, we'll have to take a look. They're in various stages as well. So.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Miller, for making note regarding the budget piece. I'll be interested in that as it develops. And secondly, I was just wondering, with respect to the areas that have been selected for review, whether C I A C has been circulated this report, or whether they've had any commentary with respect to those areas?
All right. Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee L. Harrison. No, we did not consult with C I A C around this, first of all, because the way the report laid out. But second of all, they will be involved in the review itself. About circulating it to them, though, no, we haven't done that. But that's not something we can't do. Of course, we, yeah, we could do that. They would have picked up on it, obviously, from the Board Agenda. And I don't know if Superintendent Zoniffeld's had any comments from them, but go ahead.
I could just add that this, I did share with them that we were coming with this report at our last C I A C meeting, and we did share this report with them earlier this week.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair. Just wanted to know, Director Miller, are we breaking new ground with this particular study on special education? Or has a comprehensive study taken place on these very three areas of focus in the past? I'm just looking for the historical, if we've ever done this before, and have we learned from the past, or what are we doing with this?
Through your Chair Amos, to Trustee Gray. Associate Director Bog will have some of this answer. We, as a Board, did one several years ago. I don't know if the extent of it, if it was as comprehensive of this or these areas of focus. Other Boards have tried to do it. Other Boards have done it. We do know that one Board put out an, one Board, one, one Board put out an R F P and got none, got no, nobody that with the expertise to do it, right? But I'll look to Associate Director Bog. I think we are breaking some new ground, though, because we've kind of laid down the areas that we want to look at. And I believe we're breaking new ground, because part of the impetus of this is the challenge we're facing with special education around funding. So, David, do you want to add?
Yeah, and I'm stretching my memory, because they happened before my time in Student Services as well. I believe there was one review of, it was a smaller review, and we had an outside consultant help with that. And prior to that, we had conducted sort of our own internal review as well, but without the help of a facilitator. I would say this, you know, and other Boards have looked at this issue, because this is a big issue across the province. But I'm not, as Director Miller has said, I'm not sure there's a model out there where there's been an outside provider come in, do a review that would be transferable from Board to Board, because the other piece is that we each operate quite differently in terms of special ed programs and services. And so what, the recommendations in one Board may not apply in the same way to another Board as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. My question is also regarding the areas that have been selected for review. Just a question about the, it says a regional staff support provided to students and schools. to students and schools. And I was just wondering if someone could explain the difference between regional staff supports and non-regional staff supports. Okay.
Through the chair, to trustee Graves, that refers to our tenure staff. So, so I guess more broadly, these, we selected these three areas largely because they encompass the vast majority of our staff within Student Services and the vast majority of our cost. So, we thought by having these as a bit of our frame, that we would encompass, you know, a pretty wide swath of which we might be able to examine and look for those savings. So.
Thank you. Is there any further speakers on this tonight? Seeing none, we'll look forward to the report back on this. So, the next item is now the Ombudsman Administrative Procedure Update. Associate Director Bo, report 16108 on page 114 of the board package. Associate Director Bo.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to stay here, if that's okay. This is a, just a quick update. This is from the last board meeting. We got a little bit of feedback from trustees. There's been one minor change made to the one admin procedure, and we updated the graphic, both of which will land on the board website. So, we thought they need to be part of the public record, and that's why they're coming back. So, unless there are other suggestions, both of these will land on our board website ASAP.
Trustee Harvey Hope. As the person who asked for the changes, I thank you for making both little changes. My little note when I was reading was, "Good."
Like the teacher marking your work.
And seeing no further questions or comments, thank you very much. So, our next item is the Ombudsman Administrative Procedure. Oh, no, we just did that one, sorry. Administrative Procedure Update. Director Miller, report 16111 on page 117 of your board package.
Thank you, Chair Amos. There's four admin procedures for you to consider or to look at this evening. International Students has been rescinded because we've incorporated much of it into other procedures and so on. The other three, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Hunt Gibbons to either answer questions or if she has any comments.
Thank you, Director Miller. I would just start by saying that all three before you are the result of rewrites on the basis of efficiency. So, you will see that they are actually putting together other pieces that stood alone in the past. So, I'll start with the ones that are related more to physical activity. So, we used to have environmental factors in the form of thunder and lightning. There are many more environmental factors. So, as an example, it is relabeled, and it takes into account things like high winds and other outdoor environmental issues, and that is the reason for the rewrite, as well as with risks management, putting things together in one place. And the one with the greatest amount of work attached to it is, of course, the review and revision of Growing Success. It was time, it was up for revision. Growing Success is, of course, the wonderful document from the ministry that I carry with me wherever I go, in case anyone would like to read it, which is the Ministry Policy on Assessment and Evaluation. And of course, each board has its own APs that support it. And in rewriting it, we did one-stop shopping so that parents and students and staff could find it in one place as one AP and not in different ones. And so, that work was work that I was referencing about our student trustees earlier, because our Student Senate was one of the student voice that went into this, and we had over 1,000 different surveys and voices as part of that and the rewrites. So, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on any of these procedure updates? Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question around extreme temperatures. And these are extreme temperatures as the effect outdoor activities. I was just wondering if there's any provision for extreme indoor temperatures?
We have extreme lower-end temperatures, but I believe you're referring to high-end temperatures in the heat of the summer that may be coming before the end of the year, and I'll defer to Superintendent Cullen. But that isn't the reason for which the AP was written or directed.
Through the chair, to the trustees, the technical determinations as they exist currently, there's actually a low temperature, it's formerly 65 degrees Fahrenheit, but there is no upper temperature in regulation. As far as practice and procedure go, there's a number of different things, obviously, that schools do related to moving classes outside or to shaded areas or things of that nature, but formally, we don't have a direction that we provide.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on these procedures? Seeing none, thank you very much, Director Miller, and Superintendent Hunt Gibbons on your report tonight. So, we're now up to committee reports. Vice Chair Graves.
So, as we heard earlier this evening, the community planning partnerships meeting will take place during next week's Committee of the Whole meeting, starting at 7 o'clock. Prior to that, we will be hopefully finalizing our bylaws, and we will have some training discussion, and I believe an update on communications as time allows that evening as well. Thank you.
And you have to, are you not going to mention the trustee code of conduct, or is that not something I'm supposed to?
Okay, so are you going to do it? Okay. Trustee Cullen.
Yes, the trustee code of conduct was recommended through the last policy bylaw and governance committee meeting to come to trustees for a decision. It has been split into a policy and a bylaw. However, since having just attended the OPSA AGM, I've discovered that bylaw might not be the right place for it. So, we might want to actually have a talk about how we've split it up. They say that it should be referenced in the bylaws, but not exist within the bylaws. So, there may need to be some discussion about that.
But can we recommend it to be posted right now?
We can recommend the policy to be posted, yes.
Are you moving that?
I will move that.
Would someone like to second the motion to post the trustee code of conduct? Trustee Pappin, is there any discussion on, just show me your hands, because there's others on the list, about the trustee code of conduct, if you want to discuss about it being posted? Trustee Harvey Hope.
So, are we going to post just the policy piece or the two pieces together so that people are going to get this whole sense of it, and then with the disclaimer saying, "Final product to be determined"?
The agreement at policy bylaw and governance was that the policy piece would be posted with the bylaw piece as an appendix, and the reference being that the bylaw piece is not part of the policy.
That's what I recall as well. So, seeing no further discussion on that motion, do we have that on the? Previous, previous. Well, I can't find it. I guess we have to waive the rules to deal with it tonight? Oh, that's sort, that's just. That's just code of conduct policy as opposed to, that's this. You're waiving the rules? Can I have a second or two, waive the rules to deal with it tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope. Any discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none? All those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with that tonight? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, all those in favor of the posting the code of conduct policy?
Can I?
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Just make a comment. It's just for posting, and I would respectfully request that in the fall, we do not waive the rules to pass it, so that it follows normal procedure. Thank you. Well, just, I want to make it noted now because we still haven't figured out the final product, so we definitely don't want it to come in one package.
Okay, so we're still on committee reports. Trustee Gibbons.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Yesterday, I attended the Mental Health Steering Committee meeting, and unfortunately, I couldn't stay the whole meeting. But there was a very, there were some updates with regards to what's been going on lately. And the Run for Mental Health, it is actually a co-run event with our Co-Terminus Board, was an incredible success. In fact, they were a little, they had to close down registration because they had so many people coming out for it. And it was, so it was a wonderfully well-attended event. And there is, I understand there's, I've seen the video, there'll be a video coming out to kind of highlight the day. And also, they're working on some new initiatives in the area of promoting mindfulness to support well-being for students and staff within the board. So, just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
I'll decline it this time.
Trustee L. Harrison.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Three brief points around yesterday's environmental management team meeting. Firstly, they wanted to express their gratitude to the PIC reps for taking forward the idea or questions around waste management at fundraising or for fundraising. So, thank you, PIC people, and hopefully, we can be kept in the loop on how that moves forward. Secondly, the group is hoping to move forward a green meeting charter in the near future, so look out for that. And thirdly, Eco School Tours have now completed. We have four platinum schools this year, and many, many gold and silver standard schools as well. So, congratulations to all of those schools. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no further committee reports, so we will move on to the directors' report.
Thanks, Chair Amos. I just have mostly good news. Well, no, it's all good news. I received a letter from Ontario Principals Council. One of our principals is a vice president of the Ontario Principals Council, Larry O'Malley. He was last year and again was re-elected for next year. Our own very, David, our own David Lewis, as you all know, is retiring. He received from the Ontario Council for Technology Education, the Technological Education Leadership Award, which is a pretty prestigious award. And it's a pretty cool award because he also gets to, they give him $1,000 to provide a bursary for a kid going into technical education, and David will be involved with that. We also had another award from one of our teachers from the Ontario Council for Technology Education. Ingrid Munson, who is currently at Maple Grove, Maple Grove, won an Excellence in Teaching Award. And if anybody's, if any of you ever had the opportunity go into one of her classes, I'm telling you, they're fantastic to watch this woman teach. And then there's some, there's some student awards as a result of the work of Ingrid Munson at BASEF's Canada Wide Science Fair. Winning a gold medal and a Challenge Award for the top senior innovation project is Carolyn Mahat, grade 11, MM Robinson High School. The project was Slowing Down to Power Your Town. And winning silver medal and a special award, the Australian National Youth Science Forum Award, was Jack Mogus, a grade 10 student at Garth Webb Secondary School. And this kid is destined for something. His project was graphene-reinforced Guaoyul rubber, conductive hypoallergenic supernano-composite. He's in grade 10. That's it. I do have, if the board can indulge me, I have a very brief 30-second news item for private. If we could go back into private at the end of this, it won't take more than 30 seconds. I just have some information to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications from the chair. I don't believe I have anything other than to remind trustees about the retirement dinner tomorrow night, and I know at least one of the people in this room will be there. We're not yaying. And I can't think of anything else at the moment. Any trustee questions or comments tonight? Whoops, you're going to have to redone it because I reset it. Go ahead. Trustee Gibbons.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I just want to do a quick bunch of shout-outs here for excellent, successful, fun fairs at Charles Arbo Dweck, Clarksdale, and Polly Fisher. Kudos to Rolling Meadows for their efforts to raise money for Fort McMurray. And also, kudos to Polly Fisher Public School and Florence Mears Public Schools for their wonderful initiatives for active transportation specifically around biking to and from schools.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair. I actually have two questions that are related to our FI discussion earlier, and I have a couple of comments. So, how do you want me to do that? Go with the questions first? Okay. So, I would like to revisit, but not for detailed discussion today, but at some point, a suggestion made by trustee L. Harrison about creating a legacy document that would include all the information, data, and research, decision processes used in the past and during the PVC process, so that this document is used for future reference. It would also include the annual assessment of program uptake and resulting balance between the English and French immersion programs at dual-track schools. So, this is something that would document how we made our decisions, what the impacts were, lessons learned. So, should we come to this point again in the future, it should facilitate some of that information sharing, gathering, and learning and building on. So, that's my one question or comment. And my second around French is the fact that children are not placed in French immersion by their parents does not mean that there is no interest in the French language or bilingualism. And so, again, using trustee L. Harrison's earlier reference to different pathways to learning, I'm, I would be pleased to see HDSB embrace some kind of a partnership or collaboration with other agencies or organizations that provide French language opportunities for children, both inside, for instance, lunchtime, or outside the school, maybe after-school clubs and camps, with further experience with the French language and exposure. So, that's that. Director Miller?
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Oliver. On your first one, certainly, we can talk about that. And I'm looking at associate director Bog. We don't see an issue in creating that, so we'll sit down and kind of map out how we create it and what we'll create. So, on the second one, it's an interesting prospect. We can certainly look at that as well. So, we'll talk about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. Hey, thanks, trustee Oliver. That's great. Appreciate that. So, I just wanted to shout out quickly to the TA Blake Lock students that did awesome at the Eddies. I know this is a little slow, but so am I sometimes. To Caroline and Evie for their best-in-category excellent films that they made. And also, I just wanted to say, it's been a great pleasure working with the schools in southwest Oakville this last school term. They're all doing great year-end things, and all the best to the students that are graduating, and it was great to get to know everybody just a little bit better this year. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
I would like to congratulate six schools in Oakville's Ward Four: Palermo, Captain R. Wilson, Forest Trail, Pilgrim Wood, Heritage Glen, and Abbey Park for their collaboration in first, in the first Ward Four joint fundraising initiative. This initiative was co-led by me and a Me Too-y teacher lead from Palermo, Ms. Parent. And it involved the schools, Me Too- and it involved the schools Me Too Club, Social Justice Club, and the school community. Together, the schools raised close to $1,500 to purchase bicycles and baby items for two privately-sponsored Syrian families newly arriving in Oakville. And also, I would like to congratulate Ms. Parent from Palermo, a recent recipient of ATO's Distinguished Educator Award, so congratulations.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Just one short announcement from the Halton Learning Foundation, thank you to all the trustees and to all the members of Senior Admin who participated in the golf tournament fundraiser this past week, thank you.
Thank you. So, I believe that exhausts our list, so. So, I would just like to, we do have to go back into private, apparently, for 30 seconds? So, I'd just like to wish everyone a very happy summer, this is our last board meeting until September, so the last meeting of the 2015-2016 school year. We have accomplished a lot, we should be very proud of ourselves, this was a very intensive meeting, and I think we've done a great job, and I'm not patting ourselves on the back, it's just been, it's a lot of hard work to get here, but we had some major issues to deal with, and so congratulations to everybody involved. So, can I have a motion to move into private? Trustee Gervence, seconded by trustee Pappin. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you. And I see former director Uwali sitting at the back, even though he was texting from somewhere else a little while ago. Oh, dear. So, thank you very much, everyone, you'll have to ask everybody to leave, but thank you for coming tonight.